All right, I'm going to go ahead and get started. Since we've got our quorum back here at the dais, we have reconvened and there are no closed session items to report, so we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:05 PM and shift over to our regular meeting. I'd like to call to order the regular Elk Grove City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, and it is 6:05 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Saturday, June 11th at 6:00 PM, and Sunday, June 12th at 9:00 AM. It is being closed captioned and will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, you can find blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the room, or up here at our front desk with Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard. If you complete those cards, we can then sign you up for the item that you're here to speak on, and if you get those in prior to consideration of the agenda item, that would be greatly appreciated. With that, that'll take us on to the roll call. For the roll call, I will first start out with Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suwen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
Everyone is present.
All right, thank you. Next up is our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to invite Councilmember Hume to lead us.
Please address the flag. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. All right, next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I would note that the presentation of Item 4.4 from the Historic Preservation Committee, there was a scheduling conflict this evening, and we just asked from the staff perspective if we can move that presentation to our regular meeting of June 22nd, 2022.
All right, thank you. So with that adjustment...
I'll move the agenda with the clerk's notice there.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is our closed session.
And under Section 3 of the closed session, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, so that will advance us to Section 4, Presentations and Announcements, Mayor.
All right, at this time, we're going to do two proclamations at the same time upon request of our Diversity and Inclusion Commission, so I would like to call up our members of the DNI Commission. As we recognize, for two very special occasions, the first one we will do is for our LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and the second one we will be doing is June 19th for Juneteenth. Welcome, all of you. And it is my pleasure to read, and I'll have our Vice Mayor read the Juneteenth one. All right. LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2022. Whereas the city of Elk Grove strives to be an inclusive community that embraces the rich diversity, that makes Elk Grove a wonderful community to live, work, and play in, and lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual LGBTQIA individuals have made important and lasting contributions to our country, state, and city, and the city of Elk Grove celebrates the contributions that the LGBTQIA+ residents make to Elk Grove's economic, cultural, and social life. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ friends, allies, local organizations, and faith communities show considerable support to the LGBTQIA+ community, thereby making Elk Grove a more inclusive place for LGBTQIA+ residents, and whereas each year, June 28th marks the anniversary of the Stonewall riots that gave birth to the modern LGBTQIA+ civil rights movement in the United States, and whereas Pride Month seeks to increase the visibility, activism, and acceptance of all people with diverse sexualities and/or gender, and educate the public regarding issues faced by the LGBTQIA+ community so we may all be better allies. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of June 2022 to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Elk Grove, and urges all residents to join in celebrating the culture, accomplishments, and contributions of LGBTQIA+ people, and encourages all residents to work to help advance the cause for equality for LGBTQIA+ people and their families. Signed, this 8th day of June 2022. Vice Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to read this proclamation as well. You know, this holiday, Juneteenth, is something that I think I'm very pleased to see in folks who may not be aware of Juneteenth and what it represents, so I'm pleased to see it getting more recognition and people learning more about it. So hopefully, for those who watch, if they're not familiar, this will provide a little bit more information and background. So whereas in September 22, 1862, the Emancipation Proclamation and the Executive Order were issued by President Abraham Lincoln declaring the owning of slaves to be illegal effective January 1, 1863, and whereas almost two and a half years later, on June 19th, 1865, Union troops arrived in Galveston, Texas, bringing news of the proclamation and executive order that slaves should be freed, and whereas Juneteenth is a holiday commemorating the liberation of African-Americans attained by the African-American community's perseverance and innovation despite the perils faced, coupled with the proclamation and executive order outlawing slavery, and whereas Juneteenth is the longest celebrated holiday commemorating the end of slavery, acknowledging the achievements of the African-American diaspora throughout and in spite of slavery, and continuing to this day, and whereas almost 156 years later, on June 17th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed legislation to make Juneteenth a federal holiday, enshrining June 19th as the national day to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States, stating that signing the law was one of the greatest honors he has had as president. And whereas the City of Elk Grove's Diversity and Inclusion Commission invites residents to attend the Cultural Connection Storyteller Event, celebrating Juneteenth on Thursday, June 16th, 2022, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at District 56's outdoor patio. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims June 19th as Juneteenth in the City of Elk Grove acknowledges the systemic injustices still faced by the African-American population, and urges all residents to join in celebration of culture, accomplishments, and contributions of the African-American community, and encourages all residents to foster a community that continues to advance the movement toward equality and justice for African-American people.
All right, thank you. Well, I would like to invite you to say a few words. We'll start with the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and then we'll switch over to Juneteenth, and then we're going to come down there and take some pictures.
I feel like I've gotten to say a lot of words up here lately.
That's good.
I think I'm just going to say thank you very, very much for all of the support, the flag raising, the proclamation. Having only been on the DNI Committee for so long, what, three months, four months now, to see as much action, as much support has taken place is incredibly heartfelt, and you know, in talking to community members throughout Elk Grove, I think that there was a little bit of surprise, but also a lot of love and realization, so thank you very much.
And by the way, who are you?
And I'm Jace with the DNI.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, ooh, there go the glasses. I just want to say good evening to Mayor Singh Allen, Council. My name is Jessica Carter, and I serve on the City of Elk Grove's Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and I just wanted us to take a moment to reflect on how far we've come. I remember when Andres Ramos first brought the Pride Proclamation to the Commission in May of 2019. We had a special meeting just for the proclamation to ensure there was enough time for it to be approved by City Council before June. Public speaking is not my favorite thing, but I made sure to attend the council meeting and speak in support of the proclamation, and was thrilled when it sailed through unanimously and became the first LGBTQ proclamation for the City of Elk Grove. Fast forward three years later to today, where we stand before you again to take a moment to share how extremely proud we are that we've brought forward this proclamation again, but this time with the Progress Pride Flag flying in front of City Hall. Another important first for the City of Elk Grove, and another important step toward being an inclusive city truly welcome to all. Your continued support sends a strong message to our community that you stand by that resolution. You may also remember last year on Zoom when you all approved the first Juneteenth proclamation for our city. I spoke and shared my story about being multiethnic and being able to celebrate Juneteenth as my whole self because all people in America were free. Juneteenth can be a difficult topic because it requires taking an honest look at our country's past and acknowledging the root of much of our inequity. I'm grateful this council has not shied away from recognizing Juneteenth even before it became a federal holiday. I'm also pleased to see the support around celebrating the achievements of African-Americans in our community by way of hosting the first ever city Juneteenth event, where we will have speakers from our own city share about the importance of Juneteenth, our history, the present, and steps toward a more equitable future. I'd also like to thank Tina Levo, Mia Foster, Bubba and Perique, and Kristen Lawrence, who have been working to bring this event to life. And as former President Barack Obama said, "Juneteenth has never been a celebration of victory or an acceptance of the way things are. It's a celebration of progress. It's an affirmation that despite the most painful parts of our history, change is possible, and there's still so much work to do. And I hope this council continues to endeavor for positive change in our city and for inclusivity and belonging." Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Wonderful.
Good evening, I'm Tina Levo. I am Vice Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and I love being able to work with our commission and how far we've gone. And as someone who's been a longtime resident of the City of Elk Grove, I was here before it was a city, it has been just amazing to see the growth in the diversity. And it's been something that if anyone would have told me as a young girl growing up in this community that we'd be celebrating Pride and flying a Pride Flag and recognizing Juneteenth, that would have been, "What you talking about, Willis?" Because I would have never imagined that the city would have this amazing diversity. So thank you so much for this council, for your leadership. Thank you for the staff. We have really great people that we have an opportunity to work with, and thank you for giving us an opportunity to continue to expand the diversity within our community.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything?
You know what? I'm Michael Thomas, part of the DNI Commission, so I want to echo what Tina just recently said. It's not focusing on understanding the history and not to be fearful of the history because it tells us where we want to go and where we don't want to go. And this commission has been very diligent about staying focused on that, and it's been a great experience, and we'd like to continue to thank you for your support as we move through more and more topics that bring our community closer.
Thank you. You know, this commission, you all do such tremendous work, a great representation of our community, diversity of thought, diversity of ethnicities, of different faith and cultures. That's what Elk Grove is all about, and these two resolutions reflect that, of what you said earlier, progress. This is what progress, and just like you, when I moved here 30, almost 30 years ago, I would not have seen this day coming. But I'm so proud to be a part of this day, where we can truly make that statement that we are a city welcome, welcoming and inclusive for all of us. And the day, you know, last week when we hoisted the Pride Flag, the Progress Pride Flag, I had the opportunity to engage with two individuals with different, very different stories. One went to Elk Grove High School, who was beaten and bullied and harassed because of her orientation, and the tears that she had. It was both painful, but also filled with pride because that historic day was here. And then the elderly gentleman that I met, who has lived here for 25 years, who identified as, he's a gay man, he's Asian American, he came over and he gave me a hug, and we just both, we saw each other and we were crying. And he said, "I've lived here 25 years. I never in my wildest dreams imagined this day." And he couldn't thank the city enough, but I thank all of you, bringing this forward because this is truly, we have an opportunity to celebrate everyone. So I'm just really proud of everyone's work and diligence in bringing not only these resolutions, but your commitment to our city. Thank you. I'll turn it over to any of my colleagues who want to add some words, and then we'll come down and present the proclamations.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to quickly thank all of you and the work of the entire commission. You know, the five of us up here, we believe in everything that we're putting forth now, but we can't do it alone. And so having you out there working as a commission, representing the city, and exuding these same values really provides all the support that the entire city needs at this time, so we thank you for your work.
No, I echo the same thing. I just want to say, I was here when we had the Multicultural Committee and how far we've come, and now having the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commissioners, it's changed the way we do things here in our city, and just to bring forward things like this definitely is something that I'm so proud to be a part of and to be serving with all of you, so thank you for your work.
And I just, I just want to echo kind of what Darren said. I think from me and my perspective, it's great to be able to learn more as these things get brought forward. And the more you understand, and the more you know, and the more you're made aware, the more it doesn't seem scary anymore. And you know, it's like, okay, it is about acceptance and love and moving forward and progress, where we don't want to go.
I just want to say that sometimes it's not easy, or often it's not easy to stand up and stand for what's right, and it's difficult sometimes to hear things that are new to you. I appreciate very much, I know two of you personally as friends, right? And on a number of instances and a number of situations, we've had conversations, and I really appreciate very much that you're having conversations one-on-one with people. You're working forward to, you know, to bring these ideas forward. I really appreciate the multifaceted approach. You know, now that the pandemic's over, hopefully I can meet the other two of you. But I really appreciate not just what you do for, what you're doing for the city, but what you've done for me personally. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Please. Dr. Thomas?
Something like that. Right to see it all. I'm going to see it. And then we'll just get them all here. We got it? All right. We kind of try to switch together. All right. Oh, I forgot. Sorry. Okay. You got it? That's my dad, everyone.
Hi, Dad. Hi. So, smiling. You have your eyes open.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you. That's nice helps, doesn't it? All right. Ready? One, two, three. One more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Woo! It's a high one. All right, now we will go on to our next item, Item 4.3, Republic Services Annual Report.
Welcome, Anna.
Hello. Here it is. All right, that last presentation got me all in my feels. Now I have to come up here and talk about the most dry thing in the world, garbage. Okay, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Suwen, and Councilmembers. I'm Anna Brulon with Republic Services, and I have my colleague Ray Robinson here. I'm going to just spend a couple minutes talking about everything that Republic Services did in the City of Elk Grove last calendar year 2021, and then I'm going to pass it over to Ray, our fairly new municipal administrator, and he's going to talk about something a bit more exciting, which is organics recycling, and what you and your residents of Elk Grove can expect in the next one to two months. So I'm not going to read all of these boring numbers, but as you know, we provide a plethora of services to residents in Elk Grove, and some of the material that we pick up does end up in a landfill, and we strive to pick up and not landfill as much material as possible. Right here, you can see the numbers of items that did end up in a landfill. For anybody looking at this, the bulky items, the majority of bulky items do not end up in a landfill, but some amount do, so there are those numbers there. And then all of the other services that we provide are services of items that get diverted through one means or another. Some of those are green waste and recycling services, which are curbside, and then of course, we have special programs like batteries, used oil, and what have you. Ultimately, last year in 2021, we had an overall diversion of 40.7%, which does exceed our contractual requirement. We want this higher, this number to be as high as possible, of course, and so we are proud that between our programs and working with the City of Elk Grove and residents, we were able to achieve and exceed this goal. We did a customer satisfaction survey where we advertised about the survey and had residents, if they would like to, fill out a survey about if they were satisfied with Republic Services. We're always really happy when we get people who actually take time out of their day to write something positive. Usually, when we get a phone call from a customer or an email from a customer, it's usually negative. That's just the way the world works. So when we do get positive feedback, we're proud of it. So we did pick a couple quotes here. "Republic Services does a great job. I am pleased with the services." Compliments to the three guys for my bulk pickup. They even assisted in moving the objects that were too heavy. And the garbage truck driver is awesome and provides great service. Our residential service package includes a lot more than just the three curbside trash recycling and yard waste pickup, as you know. One of our most popular services in the City of Elk Grove is our bulky waste collection three times a year, and then we have other services. For those of you sitting out there or listening at home, please look at this list because many residents don't know every single thing that we offer to them, such as the one free trip to a dump and assistance with people with physical needs. COVID still existed in 2021. It still is around today. Luckily, we're finally seeing events start to come back. In 2021, we were happy to be able to participate in events with in-kind services or even attending, but it was much more limited to years in the past. And that is all I have. I'll be available for questions about our services in 2021 after Ray talks to you about organic waste recycling.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So we'll be talking about organic waste recycling, very exciting topic for us. That'll be starting in July of this year. All right. So Senate Bill 1383 was signed into law by California lawmakers. That means every jurisdiction needs to provide organic waste collection services to residents and to businesses. It's an statewide effort to reduce the emissions of short-lived climate pollutants. Organic waste is food waste, food soil paper, and yard waste. In beginning July 4th, that's going to be a theme here today, 4th of July, Elk Grove residents will be needing to put the food waste, the food soil paper, and the yard waste into their organic waste cart. Some acceptable items for organic waste will be fruit and vegetables, leaves, dairy, grass, paper plates, napkins, my failed souffle, as well as the BPI-certified compostable bags. Some unacceptable items, trash, of course, oil and grease, single-use plastics, glass and cans, as well as plastic bags and hazardous waste, which should be taken to the Special Waste Collection Center. So what happens to organic waste? When Republic Services collects the organic waste, we take it to a facility to transform it into compost. Compost enriches the soil by helping retain moisture and suppress plant diseases and pests, and it's used in lieu of chemical fertilizers for a healthy garden. Additional changes to come. In July, we'll be rolling out new carts for all the residents. It'll also come with new colors, blue for recycled, green for organic waste, and black for the garbage. The process of delivering these carts will begin in July. In addition, on July 4th, garbage and organic waste will be collected weekly, and recycle will be collected every other week. With the recycle collection, there will be two schedules, Week A and Week B. Week A starts July 4th through the 8th, and Week B starts July 11th through the 15th. While you wait for those beautiful, brand-new carts, you do not have to wait to start organic waste recycling, so as of July, you'll be able to put your organic waste into your current yard waste cart. And thank you so much. Thank you to the City Council and all the community, and we look forward to working with you guys in the coming years.
And we're available for any questions you may have about anything solid waste-related.
All right, well, thank you for that. Thank you for that informative presentation. Any of my colleagues have questions or comments? Yes, sir.
I knew Kevin was going to have a question.
It's not a question. It's not a question. It's a brag on you guys. So, you know, nobody really likes to talk about, you know, waste, waste services, garbage, trash.
I do.
Well, you do. And you did a great job, let me tell you. But I want to relay something that happened just right before, actually, right before 2022. So there was a resident who moved out of their home and I believe dumped the entire contents. I mean, just imagine, take everything in your house and dump that crap right on the curb. That's what they did. They didn't call, they didn't, you know, look for any assistance, nothing. They dumped it on a curb. And that was actually like right before Christmas. So a couple of days later, somebody gives me a call, and I say, "I know who I can call." So gave Republic Services a call. "I was able to reach you through someone else, Anna, but I know that you handled this." So this was the day before, so it wasn't Christmas, or excuse me, it wasn't New Year's Eve, it was the day before New Year's Eve. But I called and I said, "Hey, look, is there any way you can take care of this? You know, neighbors in the neighborhood have people coming over. It looks like," pardon my French, everybody, "hell, it looks terrible." Republic Services said, "I got you." And then the next morning, I mean, 8:00 in the morning, they were there with the front loader, they were there with the trucks, and it took them, I don't know, three, four hours to clear out, I mean, yards of crap. And it was, it was a huge mess. And so I want to let you know that for them, I know they appreciated it. I want to pass on my appreciation for handling those situations that were just, you know, it's, it's difficult. I mean, what do you do? You know, and we made a phone call, you guys took care of it. I really appreciate your partnership with the city. Thank you very much.
And that's an excellent testimonial because I remember those, you know, that time period, and often we'll get emails and calls when things are going wrong, but it is also very important to pause and reflect when, when our partners step up and assist our community. So thank you, Councilmember Spees, for bringing that to light.
Thank you. We appreciate it. You guys are very lucky. It's, me and Ray really just sent emails, but Kevin Hoover is the operations supervisor that handles Elk Grove, and he knows the city like nobody knows the city, and he takes a lot of pride in keeping it clean. So he was really the gentleman who got that taken care of.
One last thing.
Yes, please.
So, so one thing that I've forgotten is that we have our anti-trash group, which goes around Elk Grove and cleans up trash on every Saturday, and I have, I've been bad. I don't think I've been with them in a year, which I'm sure I'll probably get in trouble for that. But I think it's important to note that while this, what we're talking about is litter, right, picking up the stuff that people, you know, just throw out, Republic Services has always been there to provide trash bags, to provide vests, to provide signage. I just, again, want you to know that that's very much appreciated, and again, appreciate you being part of the community partnership. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, well, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment.
And just to note that our, the presentation by our Historic Preservation Committee, they were going to take a couple weeks to add some more history before they give you a presentation on June 22nd. For folks in the audience, for Section 5 for public comment, this is the opportunity
It's, me and Ray really just sent emails, but Kevin Hoover is the operations supervisor that handles Elk Grove, and he knows the city like nobody knows the city, and he takes a lot of pride in keeping it clean. So he was really the gentleman who got that taken care of.
One last thing.
Yes, please.
So, so one thing that I've forgotten is that we have our anti-trash group, which goes around Elk Grove and cleans up trash on every Saturday. And I have, I've been bad. I don't think I've been with them in a year, which I'm sure I'll probably get in trouble for that. But I, I think it's important to note that while this, what we're talking about is litter, right? Picking up the stuff that people, you know, just throw out. Republic Services has always been there to provide trash bags, to provide vests, to provide signage. I just, again, want you to know that that's very much appreciated, and again, appreciate you being part of the community partnership. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Well, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too. All right, we will move on to our next item, which is public comment.
And just to note that our, the presentation by our Historic Preservation Committee, they were going to take a couple of weeks to add some more history before they give you a presentation on June 22nd. For folks in the audience, for Section 5, for public comment, this is the opportunity for items not on the agenda, but just as kind of a preemptory for the rest of our agenda, if there are items that you wish to speak on, we just ask that you fill out a blue speaker card that can be found at the back of the room, or they're also provided up here by Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard. It puts you in the queue for being able to speak on items that come up on the agenda. Where we are right now is for general public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the audience who can comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less of a large number of requests received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the City Council or the City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item, again, that's where the blue cards come in, you're encouraged to offer your public comments during consideration of that item. And Mayor, as we're looking, I don't see a lot of movement in the audience to sign up to speak, but we don't have any of folks signed up for general public comment.
All right, very good. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and go on to our next item, Item 6, our City Manager for a report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Barham and City Manager, happy to provide a few items for you. First, we had a successful regional safety day. Approximately 3,500 people and more than 30 agencies and safety vendors participated in the regional safety day, which was held this past Saturday at Elk Grove Park. The event provided visitors of all ages with the opportunity to learn and connect with emergency responders. Special thanks go to our police department's Community Resources Bureau for their work to make this a memorable experience for kids. As was mentioned in the Juneteenth proclamation, the Diversity and Inclusion Commission will host a free cultural connections event celebrating Juneteenth next Thursday, June 16th, from 6:30 to 8:30, outdoor patio at District 56. The event will feature TED-style talks from Daniel Hahn, Sam Starks, and Melanie Richardson that will share the significance of this new federal holiday, the history behind it, and their own personal stories. The night will also include performances from Phoenix Drum and Dance and Art Commissioner Leslie Sandifer. Details are available on the city's website. The city is exploring issues related to broadband speed, price, quality, and accessibility in our neighborhoods. A new survey is now seeking input from all Elk Grove residents on their broadband service. The survey can be found on the city's website. Our sustainability team has partnered with SMUD to offer a free Home Energy Savings Expo and Electric Vehicle Ride and Drive Event on Saturday, June 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at District 56. Guests will have a chance to learn about the benefits of transitioning home appliances and vehicles from gas to electric, and ways to save on new purchases through rebates, programs, and incentives. Details can also be on, down on the city's website. The city's Arts Commission will host Moonlight Swing at the Old Town Plaza on Saturday, June 25th at 5:30 p.m. The free concert will offer the sights and sounds of 1940's big band era. Bring a lawn chair for a fun evening of music at the Old Town Plaza. The Police Department will bring back their Safety Town Program in July this year. This nationally-recognized program teaches basic safety awareness, awareness, and accident prevention to kindergarten-age children through hands-on activities. Registration is now being accepted for the session running July 18th through the 22nd. The cost is only $25 per student, and the class size will be limited to 40 children. So get your applications in. City's rain garden plaza was recently ranked number 38 in the top 56 educational places to visit in the Sacramento area by study.com. The award-winning park space is the most comprehensive rain garden in the Sacramento region and offers water-wise landscaping IDs that can be easily implemented in a home or business stopped by the park located just behind the police building here, across from Colton Park, or learn more about the park at our website. And finally, as was just mentioned in the report from Republic, the city's Recycling Waste Division recently secured funding from cow waste to supply residents with free kitchen countertop pails that can be used for the new food waste collection program that will be online here in July. Kitchen countertop pails are available for pickup at City Hall and also the SWAC, the Special Waste Collection Center. And just a reminder for all of our residences that are turning in that July 1 is the start of this new state law, we're going to be diverting these materials from our landfills, so we encourage all to learn more and actively participate in this great new program. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Thank you for that excellent report. Any questions or comments for the City Manager? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir. We'll move on to our next item, our consent calendar items. I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity, and I don't see anybody signed up. So I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. We will now go on to our public hearings. Item 8.1, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the city of Elk Grove zoning map and a resolution approving a tentative parcel map for the 9840 Ferris Lane project.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Joseph Dagman, Associate Planner in Development Services, here this evening to present the 9840 Ferris Lane rezone and tentative parcel map project. The project consists of a rezone to amend the zoning designation of approximately 6.14 acres from the agricultural residential five-acre minimum-size designation to the agricultural residential two-acre minimum lot-size designation, and a tentative parcel map to subdivide two existing parcels into three parcels, each existing of a lot area of at least two gross acres in size. Each parcel will have access off of Ferris Lane through a proposed 25-foot-wide private road. No home construction is proposed at this time, but any future construction will be subject to the city's climate action plan. The project site is approximately 6.14 acres located at 9840 Ferris Lane in the Elk Grove Rural Area Community Plan area. The project site is located on the southern side of Ferris Lane and approximately 750 feet west of Beta Road. There are two existing parcels. The first parcel, the 9840 Ferris Lane, is approximately 5.97 gross acres in size and is currently developed with a single-family home and accessory dwelling unit and accessory structures that are all proposed to remain. The second parcel, which is to the west of the 9840 Ferris Lane parcel, is 0.17 gross acres in size. The project site is surrounded by rural residential land uses to the north, south, east, and west. Most of the parcels in the immediate vicinity of the project site are already zoned AR-5 or AR-2. The project was presented to the Planning Commission on March 3rd. No issues or concerns were raised during the meeting, and the commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the project to the City Council. Initially scheduled for the March 23rd City Council meeting, the applicant requested a continuance to the April 13th meeting to allow for a thorough chain of title review. The applicant then requested a continuance from the April 13th meeting to a date uncertain as the title research was still in progress. That title research has now been, has now concluded to the satisfaction of the applicant and city staff, and we are ready to move forward with the project this evening. So before you is the rezone exhibit, which requires approval by the City Council. The applicant, as I mentioned earlier, is proposing to amend the zoning designation of the site from AR-5 to AR-2. Minimum, where the minimum lot size is two acres in size. As indicated, the AR-2 zone is allowed within the rural residential general plan designation, and the proposed AR-2 lots will be consistent with the zoning code for lot size and lot dimensions. As you'll see, most of the properties in the vicinity are already zoned AR-2, so this proposal will be consistent with the existing zoning in the area. And here is the proposed tentative map for the project. The project proposes to subdivide two parcels into three parcels. The project, the project is consistent with the development standards for subdivision of lots in an AR-2 zoning district related to minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and minimum lot depth, as indicated in Table 2 of your staff report. All of the parcels will have access off of Ferris Lane through a 25-foot-wide private road. The project has been conditioned for the road to be designed and dedicated in accordance with the city's fire, city and fire standards. The project has also been conditioned to record a reciprocal access agreement between three parcels. And as I mentioned earlier, while no home construction is proposed at this time, all future home construction will be required, will be required to comply with the city's climate action plan. No further environmental reviews required pursuant to State Seco Guideline Section 15183. The project is consistent with the general plan environmental impact report. And staff is recommending approval of the project by the City Council based on the findings and subject to the conditions found in the draft resolution. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation. I will now declare that the public hearing is open and invite the applicant to speak,
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be to this place, finally. It's been a while getting here. It's the first time I've been to a council meeting, and it's quite impressive. I'm enjoying it.
Okay.
Yep. I hope I, I hope I enjoy the outcome of my interest. So that's really all I have to say. My name's Ron Stafford, and I've lived here since 1954.
Wow. All right. Well, thank you.
Okay. And this is Mr. Javed.
Hi, welcome.
JPS Engineering.
Hi. Good evening. I'm just here to answer questions. I want to compliment staff who worked with me over time to come up with this map that we have before you, and we appreciate it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is closed. If there are questions from colleagues, I see.
I do have a question. Thank you. So in looking at the, this parcel, and also, there's a similar AR-5 parcel to the north. And looking at the extension of Ferris Lane and the way the bulb out at the end has been taken down into, I guess it's the third parcel on your parcel map. And Joseph, I think this might be a question for you, is what I'm interested in is if the parcel to the north were to subdivide in the same way and realize three two-acre parcels themselves, would their third parcel have, be able to have access onto that bulb? Is there enough, I don't know what you'd even call it, do they touch for a long enough area?
Well, it is designed to the city and fire standards for rural roads, and it would comply, except that it is all on our property and it's private.
Right. So. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you've not designed it correctly. I'm asking staff about whether or not if the other property owner comes forward, granted, they would benefit from the fact that it's been entirely held onto your property, but would that third parcel be able to have access onto that bulb? It just looked like it was a very small sliver that was adjacent to that property. Darren?
Yeah. Maybe I can answer that. So as they come along with their application, we can, either I've seen it gone where you have two 20-foot roads on either side of a fence, private roads, and they have their specific turnarounds, or you can have them tie into this one. Granted that the parcel owners willing, the parcel owners, because it'll be three getting reciprocal access, would want to grant that to the, you know, the various number of parcels, probably three parcels there.
So the reciprocal access that they're granting at this point is only amongst their parcels, it's not to any future parcels?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And you don't, just, I'm going to ask it, you don't own the parcel to the north, right? Okay.
Any further questions from council? All right, then I'll look for a motion.
I'll move the item.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Before we go too fast, a little ordinance starts up.
To introduce and waive full reading by substitution of title-only in ordinance finding no further environmental reviews required pursuant to State Seco Guideline Section 15183 and approving a rezone for the 9840 Ferris Lane project, PLNG 21-022, assessor parcel numbers 127-070-022 and 127-070-026.
Second.
Now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Move motion number two.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Item 8.2, a public hearing to consider settling residential solid waste service rates for fiscal year 2022-23, rate year 19.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jeff Horner, and I'm your Public Works Director. I'm also here this evening to talk trash to you, although in a good way, and I'm sure I won't be as spunky as Anna was prior to me.
Woo!
The item before you is a public hearing to consider a resolution settling residential solid waste rates for fiscal year 22-23. Each year, our solid waste rates are adjusted to account for increases in the cost to provide the garbage, recycling, and yard waste collection and disposal services. This year's rate adjustment is larger than what we typically see each year. This is due to two main factors, both of which are mandated by state law under Senate Bill 1383. One is the full implementation of an organic waste collection program. The other is the replacement of the city's curbside waste carts to comply with state-mandated uniform cart color and labeling schema. Other factors included in this year's rate adjustment, which I'll cover in detail during my presentation, include the annual inflationary adjustment, which is all that we typically see each year, a reduction in franchise fees, and a reduction in city administrative fees. I'll start by explaining the annual inflationary adjustment. In accordance with our exclusive franchise agreement for residential solid waste collection services, our partner Republic Services is entitled to an annual adjustment to their rates based on changes to the Consumer Price Index, or CPI. I should not have touched the mics. This accounts for year-over-year increases in the cost of labor, fuel, and a variety of fees. This annual increase is capped at a maximum of 3%. The larger rate increase is for implementation of SB 1383. As you all know, SB 1383 is a state law that requires separation of organic food waste from your trash with the goal of diverting organic waste from landfills and recycling it into end products like compost and biofuel. We're working cooperatively with Republic Services to execute all required programs, which come at a cost, and the proposed rates are intended to cover these costs. New programs and services that will be provided by Republic include: organic and green waste collection will be increased from biweekly to weekly, which will require additional collection trucks and drivers. Processing of the mixed organic materials involves bringing them to a local facility for reporting and then transporting them to one of two California composting facilities, both of which are outside of the area more than 50 miles away. Republic will conduct random inspections to check for contamination and will follow up with residents as needed to correct improper disposal. Republic will provide either direct funding or in-kind support in the amount of $50,000 annually to the city or to a beneficiary organization for the purposes of meeting the city's edible food recovery program requirements. SB 1383 mandates public outreach for organic waste recycling. That includes information on how to recycle organics, as well as the environmental impacts of organic waste. New curbside collection carts will be issued to all Elk Grove residents starting July through October this year. This is also required under SB 1383, and as discussed earlier, we will have black for garbage, blue for recycling, and green for organics. Excuse me. Last year around this time, we presented council with three options for how to implement the required organics collection programs and the associated rate increases. The council preferred the option that had the least impact on residents and the overall rate increase, and that provided for a simultaneous service start date and rate increase of July 1, 2022. The council also approved a reduction in Republic's franchise fee from 10% to 8%. This slightly lowers the overall rate increase, but will not reduce the revenue to the city because the franchise fees are calculated based on gross revenues, which will increase as a result of the rate increase. At the time, the estimated overall rate increase for the majority of rate payers was 22.95%, or $6.61. However, the current proposed rate increase is less than what was anticipated last year and less than what was noticed to residents in April. This is due to a $1.85 reduction in the city's administrative fees. These fees support the city's solid waste program operating expenses, including staff, salaries and benefits, and maintenance and operation of the special waste, special waste collection center. After the rate notice was mailed in April, revenue and expense projections were refined as part of the annual budget process, and staff performed additional analysis and determined that- that $3.53 is the appropriate administrative fee for the upcoming fiscal year compared to $5.38 last year. There are several factors contributing to the reduced fee. This year, the city paid off all outstanding debt for the construction of the household special waste collection center, thereby alleviating all future annual debt service payments. Also, the recycling and waste division's continued cost-saving strategies, efficient facility operation, and successful grant funding opportunities all reduce or offset the city's operating costs. Like the reduction in franchise fee percentage, reducing the administrative fee based on the actual cost to provide service and operational needs ensures the city stays within a justifiable fee amount. These are the single cart rates for fiscal year 23 compared to the current rates. Most residents have 64-gallon service, and if approved, their new rate will be increased by $4.76 per month, not the $6.61 that was originally anticipated. These are the rates for a single garbage cart service, which includes recycling and the new organic waste services. Residents can receive additional services, including additional garbage carts for an additional charge. All of the rates for services are shown, listed in the resolution for adoption, and residents do retain the right to modify their cart-sized subscription if they so choose, and that will, of course, lower their rate. So just to recap, what we noticed was an increase of $6.61 on average for most ratepayers, and what is currently before you is an increase of $4.76. The city's estimated operating costs result in an administrative fee of $3.53, which is $1.85 than last year. I also want to point out that we're currently in the process of updating our corporation yard and special waste collection facility master plans. This will identify future facility needs, including deferred maintenance and future expansion possibilities and needs. There's also the potential need to expand services associated with SB 1383 or other laws that are implemented, and any changes to the city's cost to provide service may result in additional changes to the administrative fees could be up or down. We would come back and seek council approval at that time. In accordance with Proposition 218, the city notified all affected property owners and ratepayers of the proposed increase within 45 days of the public hearing. 44,969 official notices were sent out in early April and again as a bill insert at the end of the month. Two public hearing notices were also published in the Elk Grove Citizen. For a majority protest to exist under 218, protests equal to 50% of the official notices sent out would have to be received. 257 protests were received by the beginning of the meeting, and we expect to receive potentially some additional protests this evening. The clerk will tally the final results for you after the hearing, which does not meet the threshold for a majority protest. The new rates cover the cost to provide residential solid waste collection and disposal services. Despite lowering the franchise fees, no change in overall revenue is expected. The proposed administrative fee coincides with the estimated overhead and operating costs for fiscal year 23. As mentioned, staff will continue to evaluate revenues and service demands and request changes to the administrative fee as necessary, and adopting the rates as proposed will not have any impact on the solid waste fund. Staff recommends that the council set the rates as set forth in the resolution, and that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is open and open up the public comment opportunity. I am not seeing anyone signed up to speak on this item, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is now closed and open it up for any council questions, comments. I'll start with Councilmember Nguyen.
No questions.
Ms. Homer Spies?
I do, so I'm, I'm going to dangerously try to oversimplify this. So part of the increase is a 3% CPI, right, which they are contractually entitled to request, right?
Correct.
Okay. The, the rest of it, 13.5%, is attributed mostly, in fact, almost in whole, right, to the requirements of 1383.
That's correct.
Okay, so if we didn't have Senate Bill 1383, we'd probably only be talking about a 3% increase today.
We would only be talking about a 3% increase because that, our franchise agreement with Republic caps the increase at 3%.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions here? All right, then I will look for a motion. I don't have any questions.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I just reiterate that, as was stated, the number was 257 protests were received prior to the meeting, and there weren't any additions through the public comment process, so we do not meet the threshold for a majority protest.
Correct, and I appreciated Councilmembers Spies' clarifying questions.
Well, I just, you know, another statement, just a little bit of a go-back. In some of the protests, folks were concerned that, you know, Republic Services was asking for this, that we were being insensitive due to inflation and those, and I get it. But as we clarified, 3% of this is contractually, you know, is contractually required, but the rest of it is promulgated from Senate Bill 1383. And so we, we are not saying, hey, let's do this, and Republic Services is not saying, let's do this. This is the result of a law that was promulgated to us, we're reacting to it. There are folks who are on fixed income, and I fully and wholly recognize that. Every dollar counts for people nowadays. I, you know, for those folks, I don't know if they're watching, you know, they protested, but I hope that you understand that, you know, this is, this is what we got from, from the legislature, so that's what I have.
Thank you, and, and part of those costs go for the new collection trucks and drivers, the increase in organic waste cart service, and the switch from the biweekly to weekly service. Those all have costs, and I appreciate you bringing up our community that are on a fixed income. You know, and to the extent if there's somebody, I don't know if we have any assistance that might be available for anybody that might have concerns over this, you know, if we may, you know, if there's any additional funding through ARP or anything left over anywhere, if there are a handful of folks that just, this may be outside of their means, but this is what we have, and there are hard costs associated with implementing the law. And so I appreciate that, the clarifying questions. So with that, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, we are now on to item 8.3, a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2022-23 and the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022-23 through 2026-27, setting the annual appropriations limit and adopting the fiscal year 2022-23 investment policy.
All right. So greetings, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, and fellow city council members. My name is Shane Orion, Budget Manager for the city. And before we start, though, I'd like to thank city staff, including the Finance Department staff and the Public Affairs team as well, for their help in preparing, publishing, and promoting the proposed budget before you. So each year, the budget is a collaborative and coordinate effort that wouldn't be possible without the teamwork of city staff. So before you is an agenda of this presentation. We're going to start with some outreach efforts promoting this public hearing tonight, and also disclose some changes to the budget since the last council meeting on the 25th, and then also a couple of brief slides about the CIP to be proposed to be adopted tonight, and then a general fund discussion about next year's budget, and then concluding with some five-year forecasts of a few of our major funds. So a few things were done to promote this item tonight. One of the things is, we have a week at a glance email that goes out every Monday to, to folks, and so there was a blurb about tonight's public hearing in that, and it goes out to about 1,500 folks, and nearly 900 opened the email, so it's good, it's over half. And we also have a budget listserv, if you will, folks to sign up, they want information about the budget whenever it goes out. That goes out to a couple hundred folks, so there was an email sent on the agenda deadline day of Friday, and about half of them opened the email, so that was good. Then also, there's virtual outreach platforms, we have Nextdoor, Facebook, LinkedIn, so there's posts on Facebook on Monday. Also, the Elk Grove Citizen picked up an article that was published on June 3 about the proposed budget as well, so that's out there. And then also later on this summer and, and maybe into the fall, our team is hoping to partner with strategic planning staff and public affairs staff to figure out some other ways we can, we can expand engagement efforts for other budgetary items. So, got to disclose some changes, okay, since the 25th. So the budget is now about $294 million instead of $293 million. It's an extra $1 million baked, oh, not quite a million dollars, a little less than that, I'm rounding up, but we did some true-up and refinement of our asset seizure funds for police and our police grant funds about what we're going to be spending next year versus this year's a lot more rollover of grant funding and asset seizure funding than we thought, so we wanted to bake that in. There's also a new inter-fund loan from the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Fund, so we have a debt service payment that we have to make on that next year, about $105,000, so that had to be added. We removed the planned spending on Sun Grove Park in the Laguna Ridge Park Fee Fund budget, about $670,000, so we removed that, but everything netted out to about nearly a million dollars. There are also some technical changes. There was a green sheet sent to you folks pretty late this afternoon. It had to do with the resolution, there's a table that authorizes the strategic planning projects that are eligible to rollover unspent funding. There's some clarity on some project naming conventions that had to be done and some account lines, so that was what the green sheet was, was about. That's it, those are all the changes from two weeks ago. So with that, I'll start with the capital improvement program. So looking at the program as a whole, total planned appropriations over the five-year period is over $215 million. 75% of that, so $161 million, are to be funded projects, and the other 25%, $54 billion to be unfunded projects, and you can find a similar version of this chart on page 12 of the CIP. This list before you is basically, if you're, if you're combing through the introduction section or a lot of the program pages, these are the lists of the major and key projects that are in the portfolio for the five years. I've kind of listed them in an order that aligns with the CIP program, starting from accessibility down to transportation toward the end. So, yeah, all of these projects in the portfolio are proposed in front of you tonight to be, to be adopted with the plan. So now, we'll talk about the general fund budget a little bit for next fiscal year, which maintains and enhances levels of service to residents structurally balanced and sustainable through the next several years, provides funding for city council priority projects, and continues to increase reserves based on the reserve policy. Now looking specifically at general fund revenues, put a few categories in front of you here, we've had historical growth in general fund revenues over the past several years. We continue to expect growth into FY23 at about 3.1% over the prior year. Major sources, like sales tax and property taxes, are projected to grow by at least 3% next year. However, program revenues in that category, you notice, is a decline, so it's a decline of about $5.5 million. This is due to some one-time, the one-time Great Place Delivered revenue that came in last fiscal year, so it kind of bumped up the actuals in program revenues, and that's kind of the decline, that explains the decline, and it was about $5.5 million that was received. But then on the other revenue category, this kind of bump up next year, $6 million due to a one-time transfer in from the Police Services Community Facilities Fund to draw down those reserves a bit to a more reasonable level. So overall, still an increase next year in revenues. Now looking at spending, a little bit of a different story. You know, historically, spending has been going up over the years in the general fund, but next year, we're actually expecting a 2.5% decline in the general fund spending. So as expected, compensation costs are going up to the tune of about $8 million from what we think we're going to spend ending the current year due to adding a few positions, six new positions to be exact, also assuming full staffing, right, assuming, assuming we're not going to have a lot of vacancies, we only included a vacancy factor of four, rather than the reality of this fiscal year. So however, we're, FY22 included $12, $12 million in transfer out, which is a type of expansion where we're sending money from one fund to another, we're sending money from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund via previously approved castle actions over the last fiscal year. So when you really look at it, net between the two years, it is a decrease when you look at $8 million increase versus a $12 million decrease. Now I'm going to expand the lens a bit to a five-year outlook. So before you is a, is a table of the general fund five-year forecast. It's based on the version that you can find in the transmittal letter of the, of the budget. Now I realize there's a lot of numbers in this table to, to digest for folks, but I just want to draw you to the bolded rows that are toward the bottom that's telling a story of growing reserves over the five-year period. So both the opportunity reserve and the reserve for economic uncertainty are projected to meet their target levels of 5% and 25% respectively for all years in the forecast. The general fund also makes contributions to the capital and the economic development reserves each year in the forecast. So those are the main points that I want to demonstrate out of this table of very many numbers. So I'm just going to focus on, on revenues again for a minute. So this is what I call the, the big three. Sales tax, property taxes, and we call property taxes in lieu of vehicle license fees. So over 10 years ago, we started receiving property tax from the county in lieu of receiving vehicle license fees. So just focusing on those, the general fund revenue as a whole weighs really heavily on the assumptions about the big three because they make up over 70% of the entire pot. Current trends and economic indicators, and I want to say, you know, near-current trends, the city's sales tax consultants still project a growth in sales tax revenue from 2% to 3% annually over the next several years, and then in property taxes, similarly, a projection of 4% to 5% annually. And property tax revenue growth can be driven by, by a few different things. One, property values going up, new construction as well, annexations, and then also supplemental property taxes from real estate activity. So just wanted to kind of, kind of put that out there, that really, you know, the revenues and the picture of the revenues does heavily rest on what happens with these three. You know, there's no crystal ball out there that knows exactly what's going to happen, but you know, that's, that's kind of the information that we have today, this is what we're forecasting. So that concludes my discussion on the general fund. To present some forecasts on a few other, a couple other major funds, I'd actually like to invite Finance and Budget Analyst Matt Ruiz to the podium.
Thank you, Shay. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, and other council members. I am Finance and Budget Analyst Matt Ruiz. I'm going to be talking about a number of five-year forecasts for our major funds. The first three funds I'm going to talk about are gas tax, SB 1, and Measure 8. These three funds are the core major funding sources for pavement management, which is an agenda item coming up later this evening, so I'd like you to note that these funds have adequate reserves for the proposals. First up is gas tax. Revenues are derived from the highway users' tax. This is the per-gallon excise tax on gasoline and diesel fuel and on the registration taxes on motor vehicles. Although fuel consumption was down statewide during the COVID-19 pandemic, it has largely recovered, and the city expects steady year-on-year growth in revenues in future years. Moving on to expenditures, the forecast assumes the city will continue to convert contract positions to city staff. Moving from contract positions to city in-house positions will increase salary and benefit costs, but will ultimately reduce operations and maintenance expenditures. Capital improvement programs in the forecast include projects such as the bike and pedestrian crossing improvements, Elk Grove Boulevard buffered bike lanes, sidewalk infill improvements, and citywide traffic signal enhancements and congestion relief. Moving on to Senate Bill 1. On April 28, 2017, the governor signed Senate Bill 1, which is known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Revenues. As noted in the analysis of the gas tax fund, although fuel consumption was down during the COVID-19 pandemic, it has largely recovered, and the city expects steady year-on-year growth in revenues in future years. Expenditures. Capital projects, expenditures in the forecast include projects such as the annual pavement slurry seal and resurfacing, Franklin Boulevard Track Phase 2, and Elk Grove Flooding Road Complete Street resurfacing project. Moving on to Measure 8. Measure 8 sales tax revenue is received from the Sacramento Transport Authority. Consistent with other sales tax revenues, Measure 8 revenue is expected to Consistent with other sales tax revenues, Measure 8 revenue is expected to grow at a modest rate. Expenditures. Capital project expenditures in the forecast include projects such as the annual pavement slurry seal and resurfacing and citywide traffic signal enhancement and congestion relief. CFD 2005 Maintenance Service. CFD Maintenance Services is used to pay a portion of the maintenance costs associated with public infrastructure in Laguna Ridge area. The scope of the maintenance work in the CFD covers public parks, bike paths, landscape medians, the community center, recreation center, sports facilities, the cultural arts center, and other related facilities. Revenues. Revenues come from property tax levies that are assessed on properties that fall within the geographical boundary of the Laguna Ridge district. The levy assessed on these properties has been set at 70% of the maximum allowable amount for many years, subject only to small annual costs of living increases. As more parks and other amenities have been constructed, the cost to operate and maintain them have also increased. So, in FY '23, the assessed levies will be increased by 5% to 75% of the maximum allowable amount. In the forecast, we are assuming this 5% increase occurs annually in addition to the annual cost of living increases. This is required to sustain a positive fund balance. Expenditures. Significant expenditure growth is budgeted for FY '23 and sustained thereafter due to new parks being open to the public, including the community center and pavilion at Oasis Park. In concert with the Consomnes Community Service District, staff will actively pursue cost-saving measures in maintaining the new parks and other amenities to decrease the annual projected deficit in this fund. Drainage. We forecast program revenues and program-related tax revenues to show steady year-on-year growth in future years. This growth is attributable to steady increases in the customer base as more properties are annexed into the program and the resulting rise in usage and property tax levies. Expenditures. As you can see, expenditures show a sharp rise in FY '23. Almost all of the increase is attributable to the increase in the capital projects budget, although it should be noted that $6 million of this is actually unspent money rolling from FY '22 into FY '23. The capital projects budget is funded, is funding three major projects. These are the Laguna Creek and White House Creek Multifunctional Corridor Project, the Bond Street Storm Drain Improvements, and the Phase 2 Pump Station Improvements. Public Works will also be implementing a 10-year preventative maintenance plan for the maintenance, repair, inspection, and cleaning of storm drain lines. The plan also includes the conversion of six positions from contract services to staff starting in FY '23. Bringing these services in-house will increase salary and benefits costs, but will ultimately reduce drainage operations and maintenance costs. I will now hand back to Shay to conclude the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. All right, so actually, that was the conclusion of our set of slides there. So, I'd like to actually turn it back over to Mayor City Council to continue conducting the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Shay. At this time, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council comments and questions. I'll start with my, on my left, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a question, uh, and I don't know if this is for you, Shay. It's, it's maybe a part of the CIP, uh, discussion. But, you know, I've been spending a lot of time in different neighborhoods, traveling by foot, uh, which gives you time to look around at different things. And I've seen, uh, a lot of our signs are so faded out, they're nearly illegible. In some cases, they are illegible. Is that a part of our capital improvement program to go through and replace out signs? Or is that more on an as-needed basis for signs that get reported? And I'm talking specifically about street signs, obviously.
It's part of our O and M group, and Sean looks like he's chomping at the bit to address that for you.
Okay, I'll, I'll take that one. Um, so, we are just rolling out a 10-year plan for sign maintenance right now. Um, a lot of signs were kind of reactive, and so we're, we're trying to target certain areas, but it's kind of widespread, so it's gonna be hard to do that. Anything that's completely, like, whited out, um, there's some street name signs I see in certain neighborhoods, especially my neighborhood, where they are gone. And so, we are targeting those, um, first, uh, but it's pretty widespread. We've replaced all the overhead signs that you see on your traffic signals. We are completing that project this year. That was a three-year process. But the rest of the signs, the regulatory signs have been our biggest focus to make sure those are up. We are focusing on the guide signs heavily this coming year as well.
Okay, great, excellent, thank you.
Vice Mayor Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you, Shay, Mr. Ruiz, and the entire staff that, uh, for putting together the, the budget. Um, we, we discussed this a little bit more in greater detail last week or a couple of weeks ago. Um, is hoping the outlook is similar to what you've predicted here. I know there's a lot of uncertainty out there, but at least it's good to know that our, our city budgets with the reserves, uh, remain, uh, well-funded. So, thank you for your work. Thank you.
Councilmember Spees.
Uh, I do have a question. First one is relative to an item that's coming later, 9.5 regarding, and it might be a layer too low, and maybe we wait till then, I'm not sure, but it's relative to the FY '23 budget including additional resources in public works for our O and M for trash and litter cleanup. Is, are you gonna be discussing that specifically on how much that is?
Yes, we will.
That'll be in 9.4?
Yeah, we will discuss it a little bit, but basically, it's roughly a half million dollars that will be invested in a more coordinated effort, like routine maintenance of certain creeks, channels, rural roads, um, to do heavier litter pickup on a more routine basis.
Okay, great. I'm looking forward to hearing that more in detail in 9.4, thank you. Uh, the second item I have is I know, I, I understand there's a difference between CFD 2005-1 and the LNL fees that, that, uh, CSD is, uh, collects through, obviously, through the LNL's, right? But can you, so, but I have a difficult time disambiguating that when I'm having a conversation with people.
Disambiguating?
Disambiguating it.
I'm not sure that's a word, but.
Separating, oh, it's a word. Look it up.
I will.
But, can you help me? What, what is the easy way to explain to folks that 2005-1 is used for parks, but it's different than LNL? Because we have a difficult time when we're out talking to people in Benefit Zone 3, and they're saying, hey, we're underfunded, but you're saying that there's money elsewhere. What's, what's the difference?
So, I'm gonna try to answer this a little bit, and if we want to get into more specifics too, I'll have Matt Paul here. So, the lighting and landscape districts are, are a lot more restrictive in funding source than the CFD 2005-1 Maintenance, uh, Fund. So, I mean, the, there's, first, there's the zones, right, themselves of where you can spend the money on the LNL's. So, that's, that's a big piece of it, and then.
And I'm, and I'm sorry for everybody, landscape and lighting, if you're watching it, it means landscape and lighting.
Landscape and lighting. So, we have two funds, we, we put our landscape and lighting funding into two funds. Um, and again, geographics is, is a big key there, and where you can spend the money, and it's prescriptive, right? Like, you know, for, it can only be spent on, you know, lighting, maintenance, lighting repairs, um, and landscaping in, in, in those areas. But the, uh, to CFD 2005-1, which I like to call basically the Laguna Ridge Maintenance Fund, is it can be spent on more general park maintenance, not just lighting and landscaping. It can, it can be, it's also gonna be on facilities that you have, uh, structures that you have on those, on those parks, on those park lands as well. So, it can be on irrigation and a variety of different, different, uh, different facilities, sports facilities. So, for example, District 56, right? You can use that fund for maintaining all kinds of aspects of facilities, irrigation and landscaping in that area, the preserve as well, Oasis Park. It just has a much broader spectrum, um, you know, if there's a problem in the Oasis Dog Park or something like that. I mean, you, that is an eligible funding source to make repairs to.
Right, so, so, CFD 2005-1, it cannot be used out in Benefit Zone 3, which is the north side of Sheldon Road?
It can, it can be u, it, it can be used only in the Laguna Ridge geography, right? Right, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Thank you, those are my questions.
We do have another bucket, though, that's, uh, that's a different CFD Maintenance Fund that is more of a general maintenance fund, a citywide maintenance fund. It's a different fund, um, that, that you can draw from to, to service other areas.
Good, thank you.
Councilwoman Wayne?
Only in District 4 can we use those funds. I have no questions.
We always have our cheerleader for District 4. Well, and thank you, Councilmember Spees. I did learn a new word today. I knew disambiguate was a word, but then the, the, the ing threw me off, so I did, I did look it up.
It's all, all good.
I'm just an immigrant. I'm still, I still learn new words, lifelong learner. But, um, thank you, Shay, for your, uh, presentation. I asked in my comment or provided comments at the last, um, hearing. So, you know, just, um, hopefully, we continue to have a positive economic outlook so that some of those concerns don't come to fruition, but I am proud that our city is, um, prepared for such a storm if it should arise. Thank you. At this time, I will look for a motion.
Motion, second.
Second. Move to adopt the resolution.
Before you, uh, vote on the motion, I assume that the motion includes a green sheet that came on this afternoon?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Of course. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We are moving on to our next item, item 9.1. Consider a resolution approving the artwork proposal for the Firepopy Drive mural selected and approved by the Arts Commission.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm a little shorter than Shay, so let me adjust a little bit. On this very hot day, I am bringing something very cool for you to consider, more art for our city. Um, I also serve as the city's public art liaison, which I'm happy to do with the members of the Art Commission. Just some background on this issue. The Art Commission looked at adding some additional art in 2021. Um, they started with a Laguna Creek Trail mural. The council approved that on December 8th, 2021. The mural was completed in January of this year, and by February, we had a resident approach the commission about doing a mural on Firepopy Drive. Um, at their March meeting, the Art Commission is very expedient, and they talked about, uh, location, suggested a possible design, and asked about hiring, um, the artist who did Laguna Creek Trail, which is, um, Anthony Burns, to do the work. He provided a mural proposal and a suggested price of $3,500, which is very reasonable for a mural. Um, the Art Commission approved the proposal and the cost, and we are here today to show you, um, what they have proposed. This is some, um, information about the artist. He is an Elk Grove resident. His work is in many schools, and I believe you are familiar with, um, many of his murals. This is some of his work. This is a Laguna Creek Trail mural before he painted the mural, and this is what it looks like today. Um, we've had a lot of good comments about it. The features, um, fauna and animals that you would see along the creek trail. So, it's pretty fun to walk through and educational. This is the Firepopy Drive proposed mural location. Um, it's over the Earnhardt Channel. It is a little smaller in scope, hence the price decrease from, um, the artist. This is his proposal. So, he wants to do, uh, fire poppies of different colors along there to symbolize Firepopy Drive. The cost for the mural would be $3,500. That would include all artist fees and materials. The budget would be paid out of the Art Commission budget. Um, that is the sum of my presentation. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Not seeing anyone sign up, I'll close the public comment opportunity and open up for any questions, comments from council colleagues here, Councilmember Winn.
No, I think it's beautiful. I, I love driving and seeing that mural, and so I'm excited to see this one as well, too.
Councilmember Spees, anything, any of my colleagues?
I just echo that, it's, it's very, very pretty.
Very beautiful, and I'm familiar with the work, and I really love the mural in Irene B. West. When the pass, with the passing of Irene B. West, it became a place to congregate and celebrate her life and legacy. So, um, you know, just the artist does tremendous work, so excited about this. Um, I will look for a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, we are moving on to our next item, 9.2. Receive information and consider in ordinance adding Chapter 9.38 to the Elk Grove Municipal Code related to unlawful camping, sequo exempt.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I am Alicia Tutt, your Housing and Grants Specialist. We have two presentations tonight for the item before you, um, so not to confuse you. First, I'm gonna share a little bit of background data and resources that the city has for those experiencing homelessness in our community, and then Mr. Hobbs is gonna present the details on the, um, proposed ordinance. So, overall, at any given time, there are about 120 to 150 people who are experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove. Certainly, there's a lot more over the course of the year. Um, however, some of those resolve as they find other options. Our homeless population is staying in a mix of outdoors and outdoor spaces, sleeping in tents, as well as in their cars. We see quite a few in vehicles, um, and specifically families. That's where we see our families staying. We, um, do not see them in campsites. When we look at why they're staying in Elk Grove, um, they cite having community connections. So, maybe their last residence was in Elk Grove, um, they have family or friends, um, their children attend school here, um, they may have a family member here who offers them dinner and the ability to shower in their home, but they're not actually able to stay, um, overnight there. Um, so, many also cite the safety of Elk Grove as the reason for staying here. Um, they feel safer than in areas such as, like, downtown Sacramento. When we look at what's driving homelessness, unfortunately, those experiencing homelessness do not have a lot of options. Housing availability has become increasingly scarce. Vacancy is low, and there are about 15 to 20 applications for every one unit that becomes available, which makes it hard to compete, um, especially for those with prior evictions or bad credit. We are also seeing with high property values that many small landlords are selling their properties, um, in turn forcing tenants out. So, the tenant who may have lived in a house for, or a property for 10 years has now been given 60 days' notice to find, um, new housing, which often is not often, is not often enough time, um, given the current conditions. It's also very costly looking for new housing. The average application fee is around $50 per adult. With the, um, competition being so great, many people are having to submit many applications for, um, units that become available. And we've, um, seen one woman who has spent over $8,000 just in application fees and still been unable to find housing. Rent rates are also high. They're up 30% compared to pre-pandemic costs. So, overall, lack of available and affordable housing is a key driver, um, to homelessness. One of the challenges that we're seeing with homelessness in Elk Grove are encampments. Um, the encampments in Elk Grove are fairly small. They're usually about one to four adults. They do not tend to be sprawling as those that we see maybe in the city of Sacramento or in other, elsewhere in the county. Um, they're primarily in public spaces, such as trails, parks, near railroad tracks, and freeway bridge underpasses. In recent years, we've seen increased visibility of encampments, um, for a few reasons. During the pandemic, more people, I think, were out walking the trails in their, um, community and enjoying the public spaces and in turn noticing encampments. And additionally, encampments were not moving as frequently due to the shelter-in-place measures. So, um, some did have the opportunity to grow in size and become much more visible. The site, um, of encampments does generate many calls to the police department from members of the public. There are health and safety considerations for the community as a whole, for those living in the encampments, as well as the community, um, outside of those. And in some cases, encampment sites have limited the ability of public work staff to maintain public facilities and community amenities. Um, another major challenge regarding homelessness in Elk Grove is that frankly, there's just not enough resources or services for them. Um, there are no emergency shelter options located in Elk Grove. Substance abuse and mental health treatment options are limited locally, and they're hard to access. Um, we do have some transitional housing in the city that I'll talk about in a minute. However, that is too, um, that too is limited in how many people we're able to serve. Demand for long-term affordable housing is at an all-time high. We currently do not have any permanent supportive housing located in Elk Grove, and those with evictions or bad credit have even fewer options, um, when units become available due to the competition that is currently out there. Some of the strategies that the city has, um, in addressing homelessness and serving our homeless populations. We currently contract with an organization called Sacramento Self-Help Housing to provide a homeless service navigator. They provide navigators to several cities within the region and therefore have a standard approach to services. Our current navigator is very dedicated and devoted to working with people. Her focus is to conduct outreach and to build trust and relationships, which are definitely needed in order for, um, those to figure out how to get help. needed in order for those to figure out how to get help and how to access help. She connects them to resources, takes them to obtain ID cards, which are needed for either applying for jobs or for applying for housing, and helps them apply for any financial benefits which they may qualify, such as CalFresh. She also helps them obtain mobile phones if needed. She makes referrals to shelters and transitional housing options as they are available, and she completes individual assessments needed for permanent supportive housing. The city has two full-time, problem-oriented police officers devoted to homelessness. Their role is collaborative with our navigator. They respond to calls for service related to homelessness, build relationships with our homeless population, connect those who need additional services with our navigator, as well as our mobile crisis support team, which provides mental health evaluation and assistance. The pop officers assist with camp cleanups and implement the trash cleanup incentive program, which provides individuals with a small gift card to grocery stores every two weeks for keeping their campsite clean and helping bag their trash. This program also helps our officers to build relationships with our homeless communities. And on a side note, we are looking at ways to add to the trash cleanup incentive program to provide incentives with the terms of the unlawful camping ordinance, should it be For transitional housing, I mentioned earlier, the city does have a few transitional housing projects. We have three homes available, one for single adults and two for families. Beyond basic shelter and stability, residents in those homes receive case management and mentoring from our nonprofit partners, Sacramento Self-Help Housing and Elk Grove Homeless Assistance Resource Team, or Elk Grove Heart. We also have moved towards trying to get more permanent housing resources. With the last three affordable housing developments in the city, we've been able to implement a priority for people experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove to be moved to the top of the waitlist for those properties when units become available. We have seen some success with this, especially in our ability to help house families and some single adults. However, challenges with chronic homeless individuals is that they still need to meet the income, credit, and criminal requirements of their property, so it's not always a viable resource for them. We have funded some shared housing where people can rent rooms at low cost, and they share kitchen and bathroom units. A new program we have also recently implemented is the landlord incentive program, which offers landlords the ability to receive double security deposits and up to $4,500 in bonuses for renting to someone currently experiencing homelessness in Elk Grove. And finally, we work with our navigator to provide people access to permanent supportive housing through regional efforts. It's a very long list of folks who need housing with support, so unfortunately, we have not seen many of our residents be able to access that, but we do always assess them in hopes that they will be able to find permanent placement there. We have many great nonprofit partners in our community that you're aware of, and many of those offer assistance to our residents as well. Elk Grove Heart is currently operating a program where they provide motel resources for families or vulnerable adults, so seniors or people with certain health conditions. Elk Grove Food Bank is a longtime partner of the city and provides food packages, clothing, and assistance to those needing to apply for CalFresh. And then Christie Cares is a local grassroots nonprofit, where Christie and her team provide meals twice a week at Elk Grove United Methodist. We have a lot of people who participate in that program, and it's a great place for our navigator to meet them as well, so she attends those meals as an opportunity to meet people and make connections. And then finally, as you're aware, in March, City Council created an ad hoc committee to explore homelessness issues in our community. Councilmembers Nguyen and Hume serve on that committee, where they're looking into encampment strategies, shelter opportunities, and partnerships, as well as looking into future program options for how we get and help people stay in housing. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and if none, I will hand the baton over to Mr. Hobbs.
Mr. Hobbs, do you want to do your portion now, or should we ask questions?
It's your preference. If you have questions, feel free to ask them now.
Okay, well, before I get out of order, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. We do have a speaker?
Well, what I might suggest that we do, if I might, maybe open public comment after both presentations are done. If you have questions with respect to what Ms. Tutt said, this might be a good time, or you can save them till after.
I do, but I'll wait till after you do your portion.
Okay, thank you.
And we get public comment. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Tutt. All right, so Ms. Tutt went through some of the background leading up to the ordinance. The ordinance, I'm going to go through kind of the nuts and bolts and the mechanics of what the ordinance does. I think you'll find it to be relatively short and straightforward. I'm hoping we don't have to engage in disambiguating of the ordinance. Councilwoman Spees?
We all need t-shirts about this.
That would be disambiguation.
Disambiguation. I'm learning new words, too. I appreciate it.
Oh, good, it's not just me.
No, no, I looked it up, too, Mayor.
Yeah, like, I don't know about that one.
So I'm hoping it's clear, and that you find it to be clear, but you'll tell me after we get through it. So what the camping ordinance does, it would add chapter 9.38 to the municipal code. And as Ms. Tutt alluded to, this was developed in consultation with the ad hoc committee that Councilmember Nguyen, Councilmember Hume sit on, and we appreciate your efforts and thank you for your time in working with us on that. The ordinance was also the product of a lot of city departments. I'm doing the presentation, but we had input from many city departments, including your housing staff, code enforcement staff, police staff, and other members of the city attorney's office, so I appreciate that and thank them for their efforts. So again, this will add chapter 9.38 to the Elk Grove Municipal Code, and you'll see two kind of central themes driving this ordinance, and they're on your screen here. One of them is to provide housing resources to the unhoused, try to get some help to people who need some help. And then the other component of the ordinance is enforcement mechanisms for those who choose to be in noncompliance with the ordinance. So let me go through some of the mechanics of the ordinance. Again, it's a relatively short ordinance, somewhat straightforward. What it essentially does is it prohibits certain activity on public property. Persons are not allowed to camp within 500 feet of certain sensitive uses, including, well, it says daycare. That's supposed to be daycare, apologize for the typo. Daycare, school, playground, and youth facility. Camping in an area greater than 150 square feet per person is prohibited. There's an area that would be 150 square feet that would not be subject to enforcement. Encampments are prohibited, and encampment is defined as four or more individuals camping within a 50-foot area. The ordinance prohibits impairing access to public facilities and rights of way, including infrastructure of the city, the sidewalks, that sort of thing. And the requirements of the ordinance are also to have camping structures be safe. Unsafe structures be subject to abatement. The camp areas need to be kept relatively clean and garbage-free, and persons can camp on private property with the consent of the property owner, so if you had somebody who was allowed to camp on your property, they could do that with your consent. Of course, they would still have to be maintaining in such a way that it's not a nuisance, keep the area relatively free. Camping is generally defined as camping in facilities for over 24 hours, so very short periods would not be subject to penalties under the ordinance. And I guess a point that I would like to make on that, this ordinance provides for certain protections and remedies. There's lots of other remedies under state law and local law that are also available. This is intended to provide an additional tool for the city and city staff. So the penalties for noncompliance with the ordinance, first of all, for many of the provisions of the ordinance, the city is required to provide information about housing resources to anyone who is subject to the ordinance. The city is not, under this ordinance, required to provide housing, necessarily actual housing, but before we can enforce certain components of the ordinance, we must provide information that might be available out there for temporary or permanent housing. And if that is provided, the ordinance provides for certain remedies. The city can, for instance, city staff can temporarily seize personal property, camping equipment, other sorts of property that might be causing a nuisance in the area around where the person might be camping, provided 72 hours notice is given, essentially warning to let the person know that you can't be in violation of the ordinance. The officer can come back after 72 hours and can seize a personal property. The personal property is then held by the city. We don't keep it forever. It's held by the city at the courtyard or some other appropriate facility for 90 days for retrieval by the person who's the owner of the property, at the city's expense. If the property is retrieved, no problem. If it is not retrieved, the city has the authority to dispose of it in a way it sees fit, probably by destruction in most circumstances. The city is not obligated to maintain items that are illegal or that cause a safety hazard. Those can be disposed of immediately. So that's one component of the ordinance, and probably the most effective way that this ordinance can be enforced. The other component of the ordinance is a somewhat traditional fine methodology. It's a $100 fine per violation. Those can be assessed either through an administrative citation, which is an internal process for the city, we have an administrative process for that, or by an infraction, which is a process that can be run through the courts, as much like a traffic ticket. And so those fines are available as well. Again, all of these remedies only come into play once we, city staff, have given the violator information about housing resources. Again, that's the goal here, is to try to bring about some change. We also have traditional remedies that you're probably already aware of. Those include a civil action filed by my office, nuisance abatement, either filed by my office or by the code enforcement department, and in an appropriate case, criminal enforcement. What I think we have found, and the police department are welcome to weigh in on this, is criminal enforcement is somewhat problematic for these types of things. So we've tried to look at other noncriminal remedies that can help encourage people to be more in compliance with the principles of what we're trying to accomplish here. And that's it. So fairly short presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. Ms. Tutt, I'm sure is happy to answer any questions on her component of it, but Mayor, if you'd like to take public comment, it'd certainly be appropriate time to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hobbs. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. Brett Bartholomew.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, and other councilmembers, Kevin Spees, Councilwoman Spees. You mentioned earlier the anti-trash group, of which I'm a member of. Personal experience in these situations, we're discussing with homeless camps and the excess trash waste, human waste especially, and as well, it wasn't mentioned in speaking, but in the description that I read, it mentioned the breaking of locks on public property. For example, the pedestrian bridge over the Elk Grove Creek. On both sides, there's a chain link fence access area, which, you know, signed no trespassing, but currently, there are bike locks keeping that locked. So I don't think that the city is the ones who are putting those in place. It's the campers themselves. That's, just wanted to bring that to attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. So just real quickly, before I turn it over to my colleagues, who was part of the ad hoc committee? I heard mostly just, is it city staff and two councilmembers?
That's correct.
So the three organizations that we cite, they weren't included in helping to develop a proposal?
I'm not sure what you mean by who we cite.
So in other words, was the food bank, AG Heart, and Christie's Cares, were they included in developing this proposal?
They were not in the meetings, and my office didn't consult with them. I can't speak to whether or not there's been discussions, perhaps by councilmembers or others outside, but I think the answer is generally no, they were not.
If I can answer that for you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The ad hoc committee, we lined out kind of a work plan of addressing different components within this very complex issue, and so this is simply an enforcement component. We plan to have meetings with Heart and with the food bank and with other nonprofits for future. When we're talking, I think our first meeting was all around housing and what the city already does, and so a future meeting will be looking at some of the different resources and things we can plug people into.
So I think, I mean, that would be helpful in terms of, you know, if those are part of the goals, we should be sharing that, so that right now, it looks like it's, you know, it's just this ordinance. So if we have a timeline of what the plans are, I think from a transparency point of view, that would go a long way, because I did reach out to some of these stakeholders, and they would like to weigh in, even on this item. So, I mean, I'd love to hear from my colleagues, but from my point of view, I think it's invaluable to have their input in speaking to the food bank. As our nonprofit partners on this issue, I do feel that it's important. So my preference, and, you know, and of course, this is the opinion of one, is to bring this at a future meeting, either in the next meeting or in July, and then have them weigh in. That would be my preference, because I do know that they would like to participate, although of course, they could have come tonight and weighed in. But to be methodical and strategic with our partners who engage with our unhomed population, I totally understand the goals of this ordinance, but I do think that it is imperative to have that stakeholder engagement and provide an outline of what is it that we are looking to do. And in that, you know, so ordinance, housing issues, whatever those are, that sort of timeline that you just described, to have that as part of the discussion so that we know what to expect and where we would include the various stakeholders in this process.
If I may, just to continue on your point.
Yes.
So I agree that I think a little bit more needs to be done. I certainly recognize the time sensitivity relative to this, right? This is something that should not be kicked down the can, or the can should not be kicked down the road much longer on this, but I look at one of the items of $100 fine. And again, I mean, I'm extremely sensitive to, you know, property owners want to have resolution.
Right.
And they're tired of being compassionate, right? My concern is that perhaps, in an instance where we levy a fine on someone, we may very well be making them less eligible to get housing somewhere else because they got a couple fines stacked on them. And so, I mean, I'm not against it, right? But what I'd like to hear is that impact from the other organizations, if they feel that that's helpful. And so for me, I mean, I'm happy to, you know, let's bring this back as fast as we can. Let's get their buy-in and then have that conversation and bring it back and, you know...
And as part of that, you know, I would like to see what that outline would be of what we are expecting so that we can share that out with the community. I understand the importance of this issue. I'm not kidding myself, but at the same time, we just stated in this presentation that they have a connection to Elk Grove. Is my understanding, our staff, we know most of their names. We know who they are. So of course, we want to be helping transition out of that situation and help those that we can, but the idea right now, you know, as it stands, of seizing property and imposing a fine for those that literally have very little...
But that doesn't mean that they can't be good citizens.
That's right. No, and I absolutely...
I would ask you one question. Do you want to see encampments in Elk Grove?
No, absolutely, but I think that we...
Then we need something like this on the books.
I agree.
I agree about engaging stakeholders.
Yes.
But we wouldn't ask the food bank how to arrest a criminal, and we wouldn't, and the food bank would not ask PD how to sort through and deliver the food that they receive.
I agree.
So they play a role, but this is part of an enforcement mechanism in order to compel better behavior, to be better citizens within the boundaries of Elk Grove.
No, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree with a lot of the tenants of what you're saying. However, for something like this, when we've just included them in our presentation, what we haven't done is outline and identify what are the goals and the objectives of the task force, what are the areas that we're looking to address. I understand that this is one component. That's why I'm not looking to postpone this indefinitely, but I think having an inclusive process with our stakeholders, with our most important stakeholders, not so much on what their role is, but they, of course, interact with this population, with our unhomed residents on a regular basis. So this isn't meant to be postponed indefinitely. Bring it back at the next meeting. I just think that there's a couple of steps missing.
And I don't think we can address all of it at one meeting.
Right.
I get the fact about the services. I come from the world of providing services to low-income families and families with barriers, so I get it. But this is one part of what the ad hoc committee can do, and this is what we're bringing forward, because as Councilmember Pat Hume said, the encampment process is getting out of hand in other cities.
Oh, absolutely.
And we need to take action. We need to be leaders here in this city to ensure that the encampments are not going to happen in so many different pockets throughout the entire city here. to happen in so many different pockets throughout the entire city here, as you're seeing in other areas. And so for us, it's about, and I think you all get the emails from our community saying there's an encampment that's starting to happen. It's, and we're not saying they can't have their encampment set up, but we're saying that within certain parameters, keeping it clean, right? As what Councilmember Hume said, giving them incentives for making sure that they keep the areas clean as well, too. We need to act now. I mean, I am not for putting this up. I'm sorry. I'm, I would move this forward because we can also talk to the food bank and Heart and whatnot as we move forward with this. That doesn't all have to come together. And if you're talking about bringing something all together to address all that, we'll never get there.
No, no, no. That's not what I'm suggesting. But I'm suggesting as part of this process, as part of the ad hoc committee, that the committee should be expanded to three nonprofit organizations, particularly if you cite them, that they should be a part of this process. I could tell you that I reached out to Marie Chiquino, the executive director of the food bank, and I'm sure that she would be comfortable sharing her opinion on this, so I will share it since I asked. She would not support this because they were not included in this process. It's not just because they were excluded, but there's a lot more information that we, as elected officials who aren't on the front lines, may have that information. So I think to have a thoughtful execution of a policy change, I'm suggesting it's not indefinite. It can come back at the next, very next council meeting or the one right after that. This is not meant to be postponed indefinitely. But I think including some of the most important nonprofits who work on the front line.
I mean, again, the food bank is not an organization that oversees encampments. They're not an organization that, that's our job, right? As council members, as leaders of this city, to kind of take a look at how we can best protect everybody in this city, right? Everybody, people, especially families with small children that go to parks. And that's why we kind of put that there, because we're getting individuals and families that are complaining and saying they can't take their kids to the park anymore because they fear for their kid's life, right? They fear for their lives as well, too. And so the food bank, I mean, you heard, they do applications for CalFresh. They provide food for families. They don't oversee encampments. I'm not quite understanding why they need to be a part of this. I mean, this is, there are two separate areas. There are two separate conversations. And we can pull the food bank back and have the conversation.
No, and I'm very well aware what they do. I was, I'm a former board member of the food bank.
I fully recognize that they don't oversee encampments. What they do deal with is the effects, the side, the side issues relative to homelessness. They are helping to get people back up on their feet, even though that's not necessarily entirely within their charter. They're looking to get people their driver's license. They're looking to get birth certificates. They're getting to a number of things. And for me, the reason I think that the food bank is important is because they see the barriers, and I'll go back to the barriers here in a second, but they see the barriers that they have relative to getting back on their feet. And one of those barriers, and perhaps the thing that really kind of sticks with me on this, is the potential for putting them in a more difficult situation to get a home because they could have a couple of hundred dollars of fees against them. I'm not opposed to doing it necessarily. I'm not opposed to the, to taking the property for 90 days until they can find something else. What I'm saying is, I think that not just Elk Grove Food Bank, but Elk Grove Heart and Christie Cares ought to be consulted so that we understand the impacts of perhaps the hundred dollars.
So is the issue the hundred dollar fines that you're both worried about?
For me, the issue is the hundred dollar fine. And it really is because, I don't know how many times you interact with someone, but yeah, I would expect that you could probably interact with someone, I don't know, 10, 12 times in a year. And if their camp is not clean, and again, I want them to be clean. Please let there be no doubt. I want them clean. But if you, if the, if homeless outreach team encounters them 12 times in a year, potentially, they could have $1,200 against them. And I get it. I know that to you and me, that seems kind of small. But I know that when I've helped people try to get out of Elk Grove Heart, I've had to help them with their, with their utility bills, with vehicle fees, all kinds of stuff. I'm concerned about putting that barrier in. I think a simple conversation with those three organizations can help, and I don't think it would take that long. I understand the urgency. I do.
Exactly. The urgency is not what we're really fighting over. Vice Mayor Soon?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So a couple of things. First, I want to thank both Councilmember Hume and Councilmember Nguyen for their work on this ad hoc. It's obviously a very important and passionate issue for the entire city. Secondly, I also want to thank Ms. Tutt for outlining all the various tools this city has to date. And I think if anybody, you know, look back, they can see that the city's trying to do everything it can to not only address the issue around encampments, but also be compassionate at the same time, whether it's the gift cards to incentivize cleanups, or the navigators and the pop officers to go out and encourage the individuals seek help and services. You know, from my own experience, I had the opportunity to work with Assemblymember Cooper as a subject matter expert on dealing with homelessness on our levies. And through that, I also learned a great deal of, about the issue and things that are being done out there. I agree with Councilmember Spees. The fee, I think, is somewhat problematic because that a lot of these individuals don't have the money. And then if they don't pay, then what would the city do at that point to collect? Or, you know, a lot of them, if you don't have an address, how do you even serve them? So there's, there's all kinds of things of why I think the hundred dollar fee, to me, also is problematic. But having said that, I also think there, there's reason for us to be proactive. When I looked at this ordinance, many of the things on there are common. If you look throughout the regions, the 72-hour notice, the city maintaining their private property and not disposing of it, I mean, unless after 90 days, but giving them an opportunity to come back and get their property. And that's done, by the way, at the expense of the city. So a lot of these things are best practices, I would say, that I've seen in other jurisdictions. So all that's to say is, while I welcome and would appreciate all these organizations to weigh in, I also don't see, other than the fee, I personally don't see anything that is extreme or out of the ordinary that, you know, we couldn't move forward with something as a matter of concern for our community today. And then by all means, consult with them. And if there's, if there's an opportunity to adjust, then, then we can do that as well. We can bring it back for consideration, so.
So would you be considering removing the fee, the penalty of a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I would be comfortable if we remove the fee portion of this, and then the rest of it, I personally am okay with. And then we can modify if input from these organizations were to spark, you know, I'd leave it to the committee to determine, you know, if they thought there was something that they would want to push forward or bring forward.
And I'm not looking at move this and bring this forward later. I'm ready to vote on it, and I'd be alone, but if I have to. I'm interested in.
Councilmember Nguyen, I'm saying I would move this forward now.
Okay.
But still entertain modifications, entertain input from these organizations. And then if you, as the committee members, determine there's something worthwhile to bring back, then we could modify the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Soon, Council, if I could touch upon your comments, or Vice Mayor Soon, a couple of things on the fines. If you want to remove it completely, we can certainly do that. And then we could just write that fines won't be levied under this ordinance. That's, that's fine. Another option you might consider is a phasing in period, if you'd prefer to do that. We could write something in that says no fines will be assessed until whatever date certain it is. Pick a date, January 1st, 2023, or somebody that affect. Or you could administratively direct staff not to enforce the fee until, or fine, rather, until further notice. So there are some options. If you just want to remove it wholesale, that's certainly fine. We can do that. But I just wanted to give you some other options to consider.
Well, my, Mayor, the question on that, so if you, if staff had the, or the officers had the opportunity or their discretion to enforce, then would the fine just carry, you know, add up or?
So, yeah, so frankly, the fine is not the biggest enforcement mechanism of this ordinance for a lot of the reasons that you've mentioned. Some of the people who would be levying the fine are simply not in a position to pay it. And so you end up getting.
Right, that's the one.
Yeah, so you end up getting fines levied against folks, and the city could collect those or not at its discretion. But again, that's not really the driving forces ordinance. I think the more effective portion of the ordinance is the ability to remove their property temporarily to encourage them to do something else. So at least from my perspective, and I think staff's perspective, the hundred dollar fine is not a major component. I'll certainly defer to the council and the ad hoc committee how you feel about that, but it is not the most effective piece of the ordinance, in my opinion. So if you wanted to remove it, that would be fine. If you wanted to do something less, if you want to lower the fine, $10, $50, whatever you'd like to do, you have that discretion. Or if you'd like to delay implementation of it, I just wanted to let the council know there are some options other than just removing it wholesale. But if that's what you want to do, that's fine with staff.
And thank you, Mr. Attorney, for saying that. Because for me, I didn't think the fine was a big issue. It was just something for us to be able to say, hey, clean up your area, or make sure you're following what the ordinance are. Otherwise, you're going to get a fine. Most people, when they know they're going to get a fine, they clean it up, or they move, or they fix it, right? Without having that ability to say that, I think there's really nothing that will entice them to clean it up. But, you know.
If they don't have a hundred dollars.
They don't have, yeah.
But we also just said we can or cannot collect it. I mean, I would probably assume that we'd levy it against them, and at the end of the day, we probably would never collect it.
No, but then that becomes a levy hence punitive rather than incentivized to clean up. So I would say in the, just, you know, like when we do in schools, let's tell, you know, let's talk about what we can do and to create sort of a more positive environment than that punitive punishment where there is, you know, we are looking to, to, you know, have them clean up. But a hundred dollars for someone is a lot.
For them, it's a lot.
For them, I mean, they're, you know.
But I think we've all recognized that.
That's often, we can have that.
If we accept the notion that the hundred dollars is not the big part, I don't think we need to continue.
Yeah.
We can either put it into, you know, hold it off or drop it. I'm okay with holding it off.
Yeah.
Right? And then moving the item forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would ask that, I mean, because there are stakeholders.
Yes.
That are also involved in this, I would, it would be nice if, I'm asking.
Yes.
The committee, if you would please try to involve them more in the, okay.
And I know that's our council members.
If I may.
Please.
This is something I've been on record before that's inherent in the ad hoc committee process that makes, you know, enacting governance so unwieldy. Because it's a, it's a concentration of information down to a smaller group of people that then we've gone through the exercise of hearing everything that the city does and the resources that we do provide and all of the wraparound services that are available. That was our first meeting. But we also recognized that there, you know, with the cleanup of the encampment at Casumas River College Boulevard and 99, and the cleanup of the encampment at Howe &amp; Fair Oaks, whenever you squeeze a balloon, the air goes out somewhere else. And so we saw this as being an immediate need. And so we wanted to get something on the books to say, this is a tool in our toolkit.
Yes.
In order to compel better behavior. And so I want to go to that real quick is, under the 14th Amendment of the Constitution, every citizen is allowed the due equal protection under the law. There is no such thing as two standards of how we apply laws. And so to the point that Councilmember Soon was making, or Vice Mayor Soon was making, is if you are a, living in an apartment, if you own a home, if you're driving your car, if you're walking, jaywalking across the street, you are subject to the rule of law. And there are, there are consequences for infringements against that civil society. And so this fine is not a big issue in this thing. We can scrap it out. But the only reason it's there is because you've been noncompliant with what we're asking of that individual. And it's not like we're asking, you know, a lot of extreme things. It's keeping your area clear, clean, staying contained, not creating an encampment. And I'll tell you, for anyone that thinks that encampments are just unsightly, you're missing a huge component. Because one of the things that Mr. Hobbs did not touch upon, and maybe you read in the proposed resolution, is all the health and safety reasons.
Absolutely.
Behind why this is important. You're talking about human detritus and waste. You're talking about vermin's, and you're talking about just the proliferation of squalor that happens outward in these encampment areas. And the other thing that I've learned, as I've delved more into this issue, is it is far from a victimless situation. There is serious assault, sexual assault, human trafficking going on that we should not be turning a blind eye towards. So I get it.
I agree.
I want to involve our nonprofit stakeholders in the larger discussion, but this is not that piece.
And that's helpful to know because we don't know that until.
Right, and that, again, that goes back to the concentration down to the ad hoc committee. But that's on our, you know, like, agenda of the things that we're going to start to get to as we eat this elephant one bite at a time. So I am with Councilmember Nguyen in complete agreement here in that there is an urgency to this piece of it, just to have the toolkit. Look, we can talk about the carrots that we have, but if we don't have a stick, then we have nothing for our officers to approach and say, look, this is not okay here. And a lot of this is born out of, from the Boise decision and the constraints of the Boise decision. Which if you read the document that came out of that case, one, it was entirely around not criminalizing sleeping. That was what they determined you could not do. But they say in it, this should not be interpreted to say that you must allow camping anywhere, anytime, anyplace. Nor should it be interpreted to say that you have to allow for the erection of semi-permanent structures. Okay, so they're, they're actually saying in that case law, this is not intended to make it so encampments are permissible. So this is simply an opportunity, while we have that manageable population that our folks know on a first-name basis, that we can, we can put something on the books, you know, just like we had the issue with the flag code, right? Where if you don't have law that establishes what is or is not permissible, now you're opening up yourself to liability because you're applying it on a potentially inconsistent or arbitrary situation. So I appreciate the conversation, and I know it's hard to hear something and digest something for the first time without the benefit of, I mean, I don't know.
Right, we, you got brown act, so we, this is the first time we're having this conversation. So, you know, for me, what was the missing piece was the plans for this ad hoc committee and the addressing some of the other missing components. So I appreciate what you're, you know, I share those same goals. That was not really of the issue. It was including our partners and making sure that we really are looking at this much more broadly, but I do understand that these are important first steps.
So if I may.
Yeah.
Maybe let's start there.
Yeah.
That this is not the end work product of the ad hoc committee. This was simply something that we felt was something we could do straight out of the gate in order, again, to put that tool in the toolbox and then continue having the larger discussions. If you'd like us to put together a more formal plan or agenda or itinerary.
Or something like this. Because it's, it's a big, you know, this is when we talk to our residents. This is one of the, public safety, of courses, is one of the most important issues, but right there next to it is homelessness and crime.
Or one or two, yeah.
And so we, of course, need to be responsive, but we also want to make sure that we're doing this with our eyes fully open. And then knowing that, you know, some of these levies are punitive. While where our community may be taxed when it comes to compassion, I'm not when it comes to adding fines for those that can't pay for it.
What if your neighbor let their lawn get waist-high?
I understand that, but we're dealing with a population that, you know, and we're also assuming what each person's situation is. We have affordable housing, of course, that's, you know, that's been addressed. We have mental health. We have substance abuse. We have so many different areas. And so if someone who really needs help, and we're not able to get them help, but we're levying all of these fines, I don't think that we're answering what we should, what we can be doing. So for me, that hundred dollars, I'd like to see that removed, and I can support this moving forward. And then knowing that there are bigger plans for the committee to address some of these other issues, that makes me feel a lot more comfortable moving forward with this tonight. Because, but, but those fines really stuck out for me, and the, the need for engagement from our partners who work with our unhomed population every single day here, and they, and they have stories to tell about some of the things that they're seeing. So we want to be able to address those. And of course, those acts of where, you know, where we have criminal activity, we need to look at that under that lens. But we can't have one lens and apply it for everybody because it requires a different lens for each person. And so I don't want to miss that opportunity. So it looks like you have more plans and work for a more thoughtful discussion in bringing this forward. So I would move this without the, without the penalty.
Mr. Hobbs, I just wanted a clarification. You.
You meant, you mentioned something about delaying the fine too.
Yeah, so an, an option for the council could be, and we could write it straight into the ordinance, that, that staff, the city does not seek to impose any of the fines until a date certain. Just to use a, you know, a, a, a convenient date, say January first, twenty twenty-three. There's certainly no significance to the date that I just threw out. It just happens to be the first of the year. So if the council wanted to take sort of a compromise approach, maybe in the effort of building consensus, then that could be an option the council could pursue. And, and we could just write the ordinance that say that, that city has not authorized to pursue fines until a date certain, whatever date you choose. That'd give roughly six months to phase it in.
And Mr. Hobbs, the, you pulled this from other cities that have, are doing something similar.
Reviewed other cities' ordinances, yeah. This is not an uncommon approach. This is, is tailored to City of Elk Grove, of course. But yes, I did look at other ordinances in the process.
And did they have fines as well to attach to?
It's typical to have fines in ordinances like this, yes.
So.
Another, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Another point that I think is, is probably important, and I, I think probably everyone realizes this, but just as a reminder, the, the enforcement officers, whether it's police department or code enforcement, have discretion to pursue whatever remedy is available. And I, and I have great faith in the officers who enforce this. The fine is simply another tool. If they feel that that's what is necessary to gain compliance, that's another tool in their toolbox, essentially. You don't have to assess the fines, they have discretion, just like any other police officer enforcing a fine or deciding to issue a ticket or an infraction.
Yeah. Remember when we had the shopping cart discussion and we were talking about fines versus education first? I'm seeing that under a similar lens of, you know, let's, since we know them by name and we have a relationship, it makes a difference.
If I can just pause you right there.
Yeah.
I think, at least, while I'll only speak for myself. In coming forward with this, this was not to deal with the folks who are here. It's to deal with tomorrow's, that's coming, that might, A. B, again, to, to Mr. Hobbs' point, is that the fine is the, that's the last end of a noncompliance situation. You got opportunities to, 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 you know, fix your situation along the way. But to your point, Mayor, which is a good one, is being punitive is not the goal. Changing outcomes and behaviors is the goal. And ultimately, whether it is noncompliant for this ordinance or whether it's even some of the lower-level criminal offenses, those are in, uh, I did a, a discussion with a former Assembly member and he called those intervention predicates. That is the opportunity to step in and say, the services we are offering are compulsory at this point because you've now transgressed and so you can't tell us, no, I'm happy doing what I'm doing. And so it's a way to, again, try to change the outcome rather than accept status quo. So I'm hap, I, I, if we want to put different language in there or remove it, I don't think that's the critical part of the ordinance. I think having something on the books saying what is not acceptable is.
And that, I'm fine with that. I just want, I, for me, I would like to remove, I don't mind a delayed implementation for January or just removing it altogether.
Delayed implementation, I'm sorry, delayed implementation as far as the fine or delayed implementation?
The fine.
Fine.
You know, I'm back to what our city attorney said and it's just a toolbox that our officers can have in there and they don't necessarily have to enforce it. I'm, I, I would prefer giving them the opportunity to do that just in case they need to. I, I have faith and, and confidence in our, in our officers that if they see a family living in their car, they're not going to, you know, fine them a hundred dollars. But, you know. If this is what's going to move it forward, to move, remove the hundred dollars, I'm good with it. I just want to move something forward and I just want to put something in place and not delay this any further.
And so what I'm, what I'm hearing is that with the delay until January, just, but just one more point relative to the hundred dollars. In helping folks transition out of Elk Grove heart, I have seen the need to help with fines in a number of different situations. I've had to help, and I'm sure with what you do as well, you, you, you have to deal with folks who can't, who can't get a, you know, they can't get the utilities turned on because they got past due, right? My only concern in it is that, I mean, I, I believe that the, the confiscation of the property will get them way more, or give you the, will get more attention to them than levying a hundred dollars that they're never going to pay, right? So I, I mean, I think we're all in violent agreement at this point in time.
Violent agreement?
Violent agreement, yes.
I don't know about violent agreement.
Fightment agreement?
Excited agreement.
You know, this is, this is, this is good.
But, but, um, so I.
Discussion.
I think we, absolutely, it's been a great discussion, I think. But we, that's the only reason on the hundred dollars, I absolutely, a hundred percent want compliance. Again, I think the removal of property is probably going to stimulate them far more than the hundred dollars that they know they don't have, so.
I'm, I'm good with that. And again, I, I do this all day. I see people with fees they can't pay and we help pay it all day long.
But see, that's, I don't want to have to pay it though, right? You know what I'm saying? When I'm helping them try to get a place, why would that have to come out of my foundation pocket or your foundation?
You know, that was far from this whole ordinance, right? That was just something that we saw, that other cities are all doing it as well too. But if that's the big thing that both the mayor and you have, then I think I'm fine. I just want to move this forward so that we have something in our city here.
Right, Councilmember Nguyen, yeah, I mean, I would just like to say, I agree with you and Councilmember Hume that we need to give our staff, our officers, tools now.
Yeah.
So doing this tonight is important to me as well. And I already mentioned earlier my, my position on the fine, but I think delaying till January would, would be that for consensus purposes.
So it's, you want to make the motion?
Madam, Madam Mayor, I would like to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance enacting chapter nine point three. It says enacting, but I think maybe should that be adding chapter nine point three?
Yes, adding.
Okay, so an ordinance adding chapter nine point three eight to the Elk Grove Municipal Code, delaying the implementation, implementation of the fine, what did we decide on, January of twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
January first, twenty twenty-three, correct?
We won't find them now, we'll find them January twenty twenty-three. I don't even understand why that would.
Well, perhaps.
Hopefully we'll never find them at all.
Just remove it. If we're not.
There is education.
It's going to be the same thing. We're going to be finding people anyway then in twenty twenty-three. So just remove it completely, yeah. So just remove it. Why delay it? Just remove the hundred dollar fine and not do the hundred dollars.
I'm good with removing it. I say, I don't understand why.
Why are we delaying it? If you're not going to find them now, we're going to have the same discussion again and you guys are going to, you know, you're going to say the same thing.
I mean, there was an educational component, but that's, I mean, that's fine too.
Remember, going back to like the shopping carts, when we were trying, initially, we were looking at just being punitive and imposing the fine because they're violating the law or we were going to go out there and educate them and give some time for changed behavior. I appreciate this is for future issues perhaps and not our current one hundred and fifty. So understanding the nuance there.
Councilwoman Hume, were you going to amend your motion?
You want to amend it to just, just remove it?
I'll do whatever it takes at this point.
I say, I, let's remove it.
Let's do this.
Let's remove it because we can always bring back an amendment.
Just remove it.
I amend my motion from delay to remove.
I prefer that.
So to be clear, it's the introduction of the ordinance adding chapter nine point three eight as drafted with the removal of the hundred dollar fine is both an infraction and an administrative penalty. Is that correct, Councilmember Hume?
I believe that to be correct.
All right, so I think we have a motion. I don't know who made the second.
Second.
I think.
Or Councilmember Nguyen, you seconded.
I think, I think Spee's seconding it, but I wasn't sure.
I would have added that we remove their items immediately and not within two hours. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. I will second it.
All right, well, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any absent, any knows, I heard aye from everyone. All right, excellent, healthy discussion, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that forward. I do appreciate it, it is important.
It is important, but like knowing what's in plan for the rest of the committee, that's super helpful. So I would just, the next time there's an update or presentation, maybe provide a sort of an outline of things that are coming and, you know, so that everybody's really made aware and they're not shocked by it.
And if I may, I apologize, Alicia, are you going to stick around till council comments or should I ask you a question that I have now?
I can stick around.
Well, I don't want you to if you don't have to. Let me just ask you now. Because it's, it's important to this issue because obviously, the easiest way to address homelessness is to keep people from becoming homeless in the first place. I had somebody approach me and say that the Seasons Apartments are raising their rent by eighty-five dollars a month, which is basically almost a ten percent increase. And they're somehow blaming the city, that this is something to do with the city. And I said, well, the city doesn't get paid any money from Seasons Apartments that I'm aware of that would cause them to raise their rent. So if you wouldn't mind looking into that for me, I'd appreciate it.
I definitely will have Ms. Bontrager get back to you. She is sad she couldn't be here today, but yes, we'll make note of that and have her get back to on that. And I did want to point out one quick thing since I have the mic on.
Yes.
Ms. Bontrager did notify Hart and Sacramento Self-Help Housing about this ordinance in their bi-weekly meeting and neither of them had commented on the issue. So unfortunately, the food bank was not part of that meeting. But at least we did get, she did be able to provide a little input from them.
Excellent.
But we'll have follow-up on that.
Thank you.
Well, we look forward to continuous updates and to the extent that we, you know, before we have, say, a formal presentation next time, maybe when you're having meetings that when you have your report outs, give us some nuggets of information so that, you know, we can be part of the journey along the way. Thank you. All right, I appreciate everyone on this. We are going to move right along to our next item, nine point three. Receive twenty twenty-two pavement condition report and presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, fellow councilmembers. My name is Robert French, operations supervisor for Public Works O and M. And I'm here to present the twenty twenty-two pavement condition report. The current network consists of about one thousand one hundred and fifty lane miles of, of road valued at nearly eight hundred million dollars. We are one of the highest PCIs in the county. We are in the ninetieth percentile statewide. Our overall average PCI is seventy-seven. And just as a reference note, we've been using Street Saver Management Program for, since two thousand and three, which adds a lot of continuity to how we collect our data and how we use it going forward. Elk Grove owns and maintains the sixth-largest street network in Northern California, not including counties. Elk Grove is the twentieth-largest city based on road lane miles in the state of California. Elk Grove ranks third-highest in PCI of all the top twenty cities in the state of California. Only Irvine and Ontario have higher PCIs than the city of Elk Grove. Some historical and pavement condition information, since two thousand and seventeen, we put an emphasis on increasing our maintenance, our preventive maintenance treatments. Since two thousand and eighteen, the city has performed crack sealing and surface seal operations over eight hundred lane miles of streets. From two thousand and seventeen to current, our PCI has increased four points from seventy-three to seventy-seven. It's also good to note that eighty-three percent of our city streets are actually in the good condition. It's a pavement life cycle and treatment costs. It's very basic. Talks about maintaining our streets at the highest condition is going to save us the most money going forward. It shows here that a slurry seal could be as low as three dollars a square yard. Reconstructing a street could be as high as a hundred and twenty-one dollars a square yard. So quite a big difference. So it's in the city's benefit, the public's benefit, to maintain the streets at the highest level at all times to ensure the lowest costs going forward. So how we select our streets, we do a number of things. But we basically are looking at all the types of road that we have. So we're looking at if it's a rural, I mean, a rural road, a residential road, a collector, an arterial. So we're looking each street, we're looking at what the consistency of the material is and what the PCI is. But what we do is we put all the information, goes into the pavement management program. We pull that information out to help us collate that data. And then we go out individually and look at the streets that have the lowest PCIs and try to figure out when we can get those included into the newest program. We are also looking at ADA improvements. That is a big cost of our streets program. So if we do certain treatments, we have to increase the ADA. And then also, we just look at our overall budget. So how much money do we have to spend each year on our streets and how, how far we can make that money go annually? We group our streets into subzones. The city has a hundred and six different subzones. We try to do one subzone at a time, or to back up a little bit, we try to do all the streets in one subzone at a time. So we're not having to impact those residents multiple times over multiple years. That's the goal. And we also make sure that any streets that have fallen into the very poor category are included in the five-year, the current five-year plan. And lastly, we look to distribute our maintenance treatments throughout the entire city. So we don't just pick one corner of the city, we don't pick one area of the city. We look at the entire city as a whole and we try to distribute the money and the product, the programs throughout the whole city. Speaking of ADA ramps, here's some examples of ramps that have to be improved, improved on the top and a couple that have been already done on the bottom. We've got only two treatments that we do that don't trigger ADA improvements if they're required. Some of the newer tracks obviously are compliant at this time, but slurry seals and crack sealing. Everything else we do requires ADA improvements. Right now, you know, it's a great thing to do, ADA improvements, have accessibility throughout the city, but it's a huge cost. And the twenty twenty-three streets program, we've identified a minimum of a hundred and sixty-five ramps. That amounts to about one point eight million dollars in construction costs just to get the ramps done, not including any surface streets, treatments. So what we're also having to do is working that in advance. So we're doing streets in twenty twenty-three for ramps because they're not going to get their treatments until the following year, timing-wise. One thing we also like to do is, is be innovative in, in how we approached everything. So we're looking at, you know, grouping our streets, but we're not grouping or standardizing, standardizing the treatments. So we might do one subzone, but it might have four different treatments within that subzone. We're looking at every street individually and doing the, the right treatment or the correct treatment that's needed on that street. So you could see one street and one track have a slurry seal. The street next to it might have a micro, two streets away might be a cave seal. So it's, it's dependent on every street. So we're not just kind of taking and saying, we're doing all of one treatment, all on one track. We've also changed the way we bid our projects. So we're taking projects now, we're kind of dividing them out by the, you know, the, the type of work that's most prevalent. So if it's a slurry seal project, we don't want to combine a lot of concrete work in a slurry seal project. The slurry seal, they're not a concrete contractor. We don't want them to have a subcontractor that's, that's doing as much work or close to as much work as they are. It's much easier, it's better for the city, we're getting much better product, easier relations as a contractor and better pricing. So we are separating those out. So we've been doing that since about two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. As far as expanding the city's toolbox, so to speak, of what treatments we use, you know, we're talking to other agencies, we're talking to material suppliers, we're talking to contractors. We're getting ideas of what they're doing in other cities. We're trying to implement those. Some of these treatments are being done very localized on one street. Sometimes it's just one section of a street. Campbell Road is a good example. We actually incorporated fiber into the surface treatment in one area next to another area that didn't have fiber, just to see how it looks after a couple of years. That might be something that we can do relatively cheaply and increase the lifespan of the roads. The last thing on our, our methodology is our crack seal program. So we, we make it a point of touching every street every seven years. That's our goal. So a lot of that is going to be as crack seal. But we've actually divided the city into seven zones, seven areas. And we are crack sealing one hundred percent of the streets in each one of those areas, one year at a time. So we've completed four different years. Our fifth year will go out to bid this fall. And so we're well ahead of getting all these done and the last we've done, make great progress. Sometimes it's not quite the most attractive treatment, but it's very beneficial to city streets. So it's something that no other city in the area is doing that. I don't sure of how many cities are actually doing that in the state. We've actually had a number of cities reach out to us to figure out if they can find a way to do this program in their own city. So it's, it's kind of exciting for me. I like pavement though, so. Okay, this is our, our fifteen-year look ahead. This is kind of where we're at right now with our budget. So combined, eleven million dollars is what we're expecting to get between CIP projects and O and M projects. We've kind of just taken that eleven million dollars and just made that equal every year for fifteen years. So some years we're going to spend more, some years we're going to spend less. But what that eleven million dollars tells us is that we're going to keep our PCI pretty close to where we're at right now, spending eleven million dollars every year. What that doesn't take into account is all the streets that we're adding to the, to the city. So that eleven million dollars is for today's streets, not for tomorrow's streets. So we need to be aware that we need to, you know, offset that as the city grows, adds more streets because it's going to be more costly. Right now, the, the cumulative budget mounts to one hundred and sixty-five million dollars over fifteen years. And that's kind of what the, the target we're at right now. This is our five-year plan. This is based on the actual street. This is our five-year plan. This is based on the actual streets that we have on our five-year list. So you can kind of see it, it goes up and down on the graph as far as how many lane miles we're doing. Most of that is related to the crack seal program because the different zones are larger than others. So it's kind of goes up and down. But we're kind of keeping between about five million and six and a half million square feet of surface treatments on residential streets, arterials, or mostly residential streets and collectors, some arterials, um, every year. So what about if we wanted to increase our P C I to eighty? So we're at seventy-seven. So if we increase it to eighty, what do we really get? What, why does that benefit the city? Is that worth our money to do that? Um, it's two million dollars a year extra. Sounds like a lot. Um, but what we are doing is we're, we're lowering our deferred maintenance. So deferred maintenance is kind of, it's kind of tricky to figure it out exactly what you're doing when you're deferring maintenance. But right now, our deferred maintenance, if we stay at eleven million dollars a year, is forty-seven point nine million dollars, um, a- after fifteen years. If we add two million dollars a year, our deferred maintenance goes down to three point nine million. So it's a pretty significant difference. We're actually spending the money a little more frugally now. It's going to cost a lot more money to do the same treatments fifteen years from now. So it's kind of a, it's, it's definitely a win situation if we were able to do that. Um, but it also allows the city to basically kind of put everything on an equal playing ground. So equity across the city streets. Every zone would all have an eighty P C I going forward. I mean, it would take a few years to get there. This, uh, takes us all the way through twenty thirty-three, but, you know, it, it's relative, but it kind of puts everybody, so whether it's zone one or zone five, but zone three, four, and so forth, they're all going to be at that eighty threshold, which is, it's really good. Um, once we get above eighty, the, the P C I is going to go up much slower. After that, it's very hard to get past about an eighty-four, eighty-five. And once we get to that level, if we were to get to that level, um, we'd have zero deferred maintenance at that point. Um, we'd also be able to do a little bit more money with our S B one funds. It, it opens up the door to be able to do other improvements that are not street-related, since our P C I would be higher. But the, you know, the goal of, of the eighty P C I is that buys the city a lot of insurance on their infrastructure going forward. Because if we do end up having to reduce things for economic reasons, if the city streets are in better shape, they're going to, they're going to last a lot longer. It's going to be easier for the city to recover. If we let the streets go down even in good times, it's going to be very difficult to bring them back up to where they need to be as we go forward. This is how the maintenance zones sit today. So zone one and zone five are obviously the highest. Those are both, um, mostly new streets. They're also in assessment areas. They get a little bit more money specifically for their streets. You can see everything else falls between about a seventy-three and a seventy-nine, uh, through the city. So again, that eighty would put everybody, um, above eighty. So zone one and zone five still might be higher. They have newer streets, but it would put everybody about the same spot. This is something that we work really hard on. This is our five-year, five-year, uh, treatment plan. And so we have a goal of trying to treat as much of a percentage of the city as possible. So you can kind of see by the color code, it's not as clear probably as it could be. It's a little bigger picture we had to reduce down. But we're actually spreading our maintenance treatments across a huge swath of the city. And so every area is getting treatments. Now, this doesn't take into account the stuff we've done the last five years, and there's some other things in there. But this is a pretty good demonstration of the maintenance treatments that we're doing through the city that's planned. This is the streets that are listed in the plan for that five-year period. This is what's included in there. So there could be some additional C I P projects that are not on this map specifically, but this is the, the annual treatments plan that we've got, uh, we've got going forward. So looking to the future, um, I know we talked a little bit earlier today about, um, funding. S B one seems like everything's, is good right now. Hopefully it will stay good. But if gas prices do get higher, people are going to drive less. How that reflects to us, I don't know. I don't know how exactly what that's going to lower it wise. But electric vehicles, they have not figured out a way to supplement S B one exactly with the electrical vehicle fees. So we could see a dip there if we do get a big push on that. Um, it's really, it's really up in the air. We don't know. Uh, Measure Eight is still a long ways away, but right now Measure Eight does expire in, in twenty thirty-nine. I know there's some talks about certain things happening, but we should be aware of that. Every, the streets that we're talking for five years and fifteen years, these are things we should be thinking of for, you know, for thirty years or longer. We shouldn't be thinking that we're going to be okay in five years. We should be planning, you know, planning to, to do maintenance on streets for a longer period of time than that. So it's good to have a, a, a long budget. The, um, one of the things we're seeing though, too, is, is changes in the road use. So we're seeing, you know, more refuse collections, more trucks picking up things for residential trash. We're seeing more Amazon trucks, delivery. We're seeing UPS trucks in town. All these things are adding up. And then we're also seeing electric vehicles. And so electric vehicles do way more. Now, we don't know specifically if it's going to deteriorate, deteriorate the, the streets faster, but the more electric vehicles are on the road, whether it's delivery trucks, semis, trash trucks, things like that, those weight are going to go higher. The traditional vehicle is twenty-five percent more in weight over a gasoline vehicle. So a Ford truck that's electric is going to weigh twenty-five percent more than a Ford truck that's gas. Um, and so, and one thing with the electric vehicle, they have the same weight the whole time. So whether it's filled, a full tank of gas or it's an empty tank of gas, electric vehicle weighs the same entire time. So one thing I want to point out too is as the city grows, um, you know, we're going to be adding more streets. So in the last four years, we've added twenty-five lane miles. Industry projections show that that twenty-five lane miles are going to cost the city one million dollars in maintenance in the first fifteen years. So we're probably going to be adding that amount of lanes again in the next, you know, probably four to five years. And so that's going to be, you know, on top of that. So we need to be thinking about the future and how we're going to go from there. Um, you know, in conclusion, I mean, our streets are in great shape. I'm really proud of what we've been able to keep with these streets, how we made the money go. But it, the most economical thing is spending money on a good street. And if we, we need to keep putting money on good streets. Um, because if they're not good, it's costing us a fortune to do. But it's also, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't work well. You know, we need to have everybody having a nice street. That's one thing, but we want to make sure they're being maintained properly. We want to see the streets. We want to get out there and do something on them. And so as the street ages, the maintenance costs go up regardless. So, you know, as a street that's been in the ground for, you know, on the ground for thirty years, it's still going to cost more. We can do the best we can to keep it maintained. Eventually, it's going to have to get rebuilt. But if we can do maintenance treatments on an ongoing basis, we could probably double the life of all new roads, um, pretty easily at a pretty inexpensive cost. Um, and that's all I have. If I have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I'll open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up, so I will close the public comment opportunity and turn it over to my colleagues for any questions or comments. I'll start with Council Member Hume. Vice Mayor Sven.
Just want to thank Mr. French for the, the presentation. Very informative. And thanks for taking care of our streets.
It's, I'm probably the only one that likes asphalt as much as I do. It drives my wife crazy.
Oh, that's funny. Um, Councilmember Spies?
I do, actually. And so I, I had asked for this to be brought, and I, I appreciate it because, um, I know I had seen it in the past when I was sitting in the chairs out there. I'm happy to see it again, you know, while we're here. Um, so just a, a couple quick observations. It wasn't obvious to me before, but it is now. When you have a seventy-seven, that isn't a, like a, you know, a, a grade school seventy-seven average, right? I now, now know that seventy-seven means something higher than that. So what, what kind of, what is that scale? Where is that kind of bound?
So I should have, I should have explained that a little bit more. So the P C I scale is the pavement condition index, zero to a hundred. Um, the way it works is that, um, like I mentioned, once you get about an eighty-four, eighty-five, that's, it's really difficult to get much more than that. You have to have a lot of new streets. You have to have a lot of hundreds.
You got a lot of diminishing returns when you're trying to throw, you're just really stacking dollars on top of the.
And then the, the way the, the way the, the pavement management system works, if we follow it to a T, is that it's not going to tell us to do anything on a street. Doesn't make sense to do anything on a street until it gets lower than eighty-five, eighty-four, somewhere in that zone. So as soon as you hit eighty-three, you've got deferred maintenance, right? So that's why you're getting in that, that window where you want to be in the mid-eighties to really have no deferred maintenance. But a sixty-six is a statewide average. I don't believe that. I think it's a lot lower. I live in the city of Sacramento. I see what they put on their P C I. I, it's a lot lower than what it is in real life. Um, we're a seventy-seven, and we do our evaluation every year. So we do, um, a P C I inspection every single year. We do half the collectors and arterials every year. We do twenty-five percent of the, uh, residential streets. So we are seeing all of the streets, um, all the major streets every other year, um, and we're seeing all the residential streets every four years. And so our number, I feel very confident that it's an accurate number, and it really represents what we have here. And it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a good number to have. I mean, it's a, it's a really positive thing.
Right. And you said, so of all the cities in the United States, where, excuse me, in California, we're third in, in terms of P C I?
On this, on the P C I. So it's the twenty largest cities by street length. Uh, we're, we're number twenty on the, the amount of street lane miles that we have. Out of those twenty streets, we're number three. So, uh, big cities are a little bit different than smaller cities in how you manage. I came, I've been here about five years. I came from the city of Dana Point. Uh, I had an eighty-five in Dana Point, I had an eighty-four in Dana Point. But we were only twenty thousand people, you know, little bit of a bedroom community right on the coast, uh, a lot of resorts. And so we were, we were putting a lot of money into the streets, a lot of overlays, because the resorts demanded that we put overlays in front of their hotels. Um, so there's a lot, that's, but that's a really difficult ti- uh, number to maintain. In two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, when the economy dipped, it was impossible to maintain it. We really lost our, a lot of P C I originally, uh, because we couldn't do anything. Um, so we were kind of band-aiding a little bit for a couple of years until we get caught back up again. So it's, it's a difficult, um, it's a difficult thing. And it's, it's a big city. It's a lot of lane miles to see. Um, and it's, it's imperative really for the, the assets to, to maintain them and to keep them, uh, as, as, as well as we can, keep them as, as good shape as we can.
Okay. So then, um, just on the A D A improvements, um, is that restricted only to the, to the ramps, or are there additional, like, um, beeping?
So for our projects, the, 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 the slurry seals and things like that, for the most part, we're only talking about the actual ramp itself. Um, if we got into an arterial, we might have to check cross slopes going on a, on a, on a crosswalk. Uh, there might be a few other things that we have to adjust. There might be a traffic signal that needs to be adjusted to where the, the ped head and the, the push button, excuse me, are within a certain amount of distance of the handicap route. So some other things. But on the residential streets, we're really talking about the actual ramp.
Okay. And so, okay, so when we're talking about deferred maintenance, um, is that the work that is required to get from a seventy-seven to a hundred? Or is that the deferred maintenance to keep at seventy-seven? I'm, I'm trying to understand it because people have questioned, well, why are you deferring maintenance? What, what's, you know, what's that about?
So, you know, deferred maintenance is really, it's really tricky to, to explain. It kind of means different things in different contexts. But if you, if you think about your, your car, and you say you're supposed to change the oil every five thousand miles, at five thousand and one, you just deferred that maintenance. Doesn't mean you did any damage, but you, you pushed that maintenance off. So if you, you're going to go to fifty-five hundred miles to save a little bit of money. So initially, the deferred maintenance, especially when you're a higher P C I, it doesn't mean a whole lot. If we had a city that was in fifty-five or sixty-five P C I and we had deferred maintenance, you're probably talking about having a lot of streets that are needful reconstruction. So it really is in relation to how good your network is. Uh, so, you know, deferred maintenance could be, could be fairly minor. It could be crack seal, it could be a slurry seal, a, a pretty basic treatment. But again, if it's deferred long enough, it's going to become, you know, a grind and, you know, grind and overlay. It might be a reconstruction, might be something else.
Right. Okay. And so, last question, I think. So as, um, I believe what you said was we currently have the budget that we require to keep the streets that we currently have, right? Because we could add streets later, right? The ones we currently have, to keep, we have enough money to keep them at, uh, that seventy-seven, barring, of course, changes in S B one or taxes and such like that. Okay. Got it. But we need to be thinking about down the road, if we want it to be higher, that there will obviously be increased costs.
Well, I mean, I would look at it this way, is that for every lane mile that we accept, uh, as a new track in the city, we should already be building that into our reserves, at least theoretically, how much we should be bumping our maintenance up. So if we're accepting four or five or six new tracks of homes, that's going to be a lot of maintenance going forward. So, I mean, we should be thinking about that as a cost. It may not need to be, need to be changed every year accordingly, but going forward, the city should always be thinking about that.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. And I appreciate your patience on, on what I thought.
It's past my bedtime.
It's really.
It's all good.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And we're going to learn the best roads and pavement you're in district for, right?
Yeah, that's what she's going to say.
I'm blinded by districts, but I don't even know what they mean.
Just watch. Wait for it.
Councilmember Winn.
I was just going to say, I think you found somebody who loves asphalt just as much as you do, right here. Thank you for the presentation. I, I learned. I had no idea that electrical vehicles are, they weigh more than gas vehicles, but I guess that's, yeah, I mean, it makes sense. I didn't even think about that. So our asphalts are going to get a beating here soon when we get all those electrical vehicles out there.
Weight equals wear on asphalt. Even if it's a well-built road, the, the amount of weight on that road is going to deteriorate that road at some point.
Yeah. Thank you.
As we try to fix one thing, we, you know, with less car, you know, having more E V cars on the road, then you create other problems with, with our road conditions and our pavement. So you, you had, you're itching for something else.
I got one more, to be clear.
You should go for it.
To be clear, I like less potholes than I do about asphalt.
We have no potholes. Right, Jeff? No potholes.
No potholes.
If we have a pothole like near to you, we'll fix it immediately.
Of course. Um, thank you for the presentation. Very, very informative. I really specifically like the looking to the future slide. We should always be looking ahead. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And this is just receive and file, so thank you. Moving on to our next item, nine point four, receive information regarding a request to create a beautification committee and provide direction as appropriate.
All right. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, Rosa Tapia, Code Enforcement Manager. Um, the item before you this evening is a request to create a beautification committee for the city of Elk Grove. Tonight, staff is recommending that the city council receive information from staff regarding a request to consider the formation of a beautification committee and provide direction as appropriate. So to provide some background, um, during the December eighth, twenty twenty-one city council meeting, a request was made during public comment from Ms. Sharon Anderson for the city of Elk Grove to consider creating a beautification committee or commission. Ms. Anderson provided examples from the cities of Livermore and Galt, um, which staff could look into and consider as models. Uh, during that meeting, a city council members expressed interest in learning more regarding the request and directed staff to bring back the item on agenda. Specific to the jurisdictions that Ms. Anderson, um, referred to, city of Livermore are the committees overseen by the Public Works Department. The primary for, focus of that committee is to preserve the natural beauty and habitat of the city by holding community events and providing input on city projects. A few times each year, that specific committee recruits volunteers to help with cleaning of public right-of-way areas. However, it's important to know that's not a fundamental element of that committee. Um, specific to the city of Galt, uh, the committee is overseen by the Community Development Planning Department. Galt's committee has been dormant since twenty twenty, likely pandemic-related. Um, but while it was active, one small cleanup effort was undertaken. Um, also cleanup efforts are focused exclusively on public, public right-of-way areas, um, with this committee. Uh, Galt does have a beautification awards, uh, program, uh, that is, that is active, um, and recognizes property owners for their upkeep or remodel of their homes. And in both of these jurisdictions, um, any concerns regarding private property are specifically referred to their respective code enforcement divisions to address under a completely separate process. So in a late December of twenty twenty-one, staff met with Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bartholomew, who is a supporter of this request and is also here tonight. Um, they both outlined a specific concepts or proposed specific concepts and, um, identified three primary areas that the committee could focus on. The first, um, is to oversee a, the committee in Elk Grove could oversee a beautification awards program for properties in the city that demonstrate those exceptional efforts in property maintenance. Um, second, uh, the committee could focus on improving cleanliness and aesthetics of the city by way of helping code enforcement identify and address properties in need of beautification, uh, by developing guidelines for beautification of existing properties, such as partnering with the Historic Preservation Committee to incorporate beautification elements in their reviews, um, also improving signage to welcome visitors to the city, and organizing host year-round cleanup efforts to address litter and trash and public, on public property. And third, improve, the committee could focus on improving tree preservation efforts, um, by way of undertaking an effort to have Elk Grove designated as a Tree City USA by creating a committee, a community forestry program, by serving as a tree board to provide development project input related to tree preservation, and by, uh, providing input on strengthening the city's tree guidelines of, um, the municipal code requirements. Um, specific to, um, cleanliness and aesthetics, staff reviewed, um, the, the primary areas of concern presented by Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bartholomew, and found that much of what, what was being requested, um, currently is addressed under the existing processes. Uh, currently, the Public Works, uh, Department and- Uh, currently, the Public Works, uh, Department and CSD have staff contractors that routinely provide, um, public space, uh, cleanup of litter and trash. Um, Public Works, uh, has a proposed fiscal year '23 budget that includes additional resources for Public Works, uh, Operations and Maintenance Division to add routine litter and trash cleanup in open spaces, creeks and roadside ditches. And specific to code enforcement, um, we are both proactive and reactive to issues regarding accumulation of litter, junk and debris on private property. Uh, this division has demonstrated responsiveness to these concerns. Additionally, um, one thing to note with code enforcement, we've got two vacancies. Uh, once those are fill, once those are filled, it'll allow staff, um, it'll allow additional staff to patrol proactively and, um, address even a, a, you know, greater, uh, area of the city. Regarding tree preservation efforts, um, the city of Elk Grove has partnered with the Sacramento Tree Foundation, uh, to plant trees throughout the city. Um, Sacramento Tree, Tree Foundation provides education and information to the community regarding trees in addition to ensuring the proper species are selected. Uh, that partnership, um, has allowed the city to work with them during the month of April and the month of May, and we've planted a total of 650 trees throughout the city, uh, this year. Um, the city's planning division and city arborist are responsible for the administration of the current tree preservation ordinance, um, under the Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 19. Specific to, um, concerns regarding commercial properties that may fail to maintain, um, their conditions of approvals related to tree requirements, those concerns, um, we do rely on the public to report those to code enforcement, um, so that we can address them. They can be, they can be reported by phone, email, or by using the city's new See Click Fix application. Um, and, uh, if it is a council's wish, staff can explore the requirements of becoming a Tree City USA, city, and return with a more in-depth presentation on the requirements to undertake such efforts. Um, one thing to note with, uh, being a, a designated Tree City USA, um, it's staff's understanding that this is specific to public trees, not private property trees. So staff, um, did have a follow-up meeting with Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bartholomew to discuss, um, staff's recommended next steps regarding the request of this beautification committee on April 6, 2022. Um, staff did agree with, um, both Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bartholomew that, um, the city, that although the city was accomplishing much of what was being requested, there's always room for improvements. Um, staff proposed to both of them an incremental approach to adding, uh, to or increasing the frequency of efforts by staff, um, and maintaining the city's aesthetics. Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bartholomew expressed interest in establishing that partnership with staff, um, increasing and enhancing communication and cleanup efforts citywide. So tonight, um, staff, uh, at this time is not recommending the creation of a new committee to focus on beautification. Uh, it would add another layer of process already in place that would really shift staff's time and resources and could result in diminishing the resources available for existing efforts to improve existing services. Um, as mentioned earlier in my presentation, many of the activities proposed to be undertaken by this beautification committee are currently being performed by the city and/or partner agencies. Um, and tonight, the staff is recommending, uh, increasing efforts to connect with community members in a more informal manner and continue working to improve those beautification efforts citywide. That concludes my presentation. Myself and Deputy Public Works Director Sean Gallagher are available for questions.
Alright, thank you for your presentation.
Whoa. Sorry about that.
No worries. At this time, we're gonna open up the public comment opportunity. We have three speakers here. We'll start off with Brett Bartholomew, followed by Joe Debs, and then Liz Irons. And a reminder to all our speakers, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, soon, and council members. Uh, two of the cities mentioned were Livermore and Galt. Uh, Fresno is also one of, of note. Mayor, uh, Jerry Dyer created a Beautify Fresno concept, which, uh, her, her words, "We have allowed the new norm to be one of blight, litter and debris within our business complexes, streets, neighborhoods and freeways. The trash is so visible, yet many drive by without even noticing. That must change." That's a quote by Mayor Jerry Dyer. That's something that we as the anti-trash group have noticed ourselves, and we've proactively addressed that, and we'd like to encourage, you know, the city to do something to affect that. Um, as part of the committee, we very much appreciate Rosa and Sean's, uh, uh, you know, the conversations we've had with them. They've been very proactive in hearing the budget increase for the trash abatement and cleaning that were, uh, I think it was 500,000 was the, was the number. That was, you know, great, this is great to hear, for sure. One of the things about the Tree City specifically, in order to qualify for that, you have to have a, a board, a tree board or department, which would be overseeing that. So that would be a, a core component of the beautification committee. And just for, of note, in 2007, the city of Elk Grove made an initiative to become a Tree City. So it's already, it's already been decided that that's something that we would like to do. So, um, thank you, I'm just wanna, don't wanna miss anything. Okay. No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Joe Debs.
I guess I can unmask now. Good evening, how y'all doing? I just wanted to say, number one, uh, I support the beautification committee, and I'm gonna tell you why. I've been complaining for about a month about trash. I live on what we call the gateway into the community. I stay on Wooded Brook Drive and West Stockton Boulevard. I stay on the north side. Under the, right on the corner is a bridge where the homeless live, okay? And it's been a problem. There's been so much trash, big pots like that, and we've been complaining for over almost a month, have been calling. Now, I understand limited staff, but when people don't call you back, right? They just hide. And so, the neighbors who walk, uh, I'm kinda like the, the go-to person in the community, and they've been complaining to me. So, I, um, I, I did make some calls, but I woke up Saturday morning and there, at 7:30, there were no cars. At 8:30, it was like 15 cars in front of my house and on the street. It was, it was like 20 people out there. The same thing that I've been complaining about for a month, it's, it was a godsend. They must've fell out of the sky. They cleaned up all of that trash. That Friday, I called Sergeant McHugh, because I know her pretty well, and, and Chief Albright and I, um, got to know each other. He knows the plight. I've had a couple of burglaries and some other crazy stuff, so the chief put some things out there to help, uh, discourage burglaries and, and all of that other kinds of stuff. So it's been really great. And I called, and Sergeant McHugh, bless her heart, she went out there by herself, and she did what code enforcement should have been doing. Now, I'm not trying to dip code enforcement in the high grease, but now, it is what it is, okay? To have her to go out and do the job with somebody we've been calling for a month, and they didn't come out, and then I see these people out here picking up our trash. I had to come out and give them their props. They had like 20-some bags of garbage. You need these folk. I don't care what anyone else says, because you don't have the, the power, okay? The manpower, the woman power, any other power, to keep up with the trash and the things that's going on. So to not entertain this committee and what they're trying to do, as a matter of fact, y'all need to pay them, okay? Rather than wasting money on some of these other folk that don't respond. I even went to the city manager's office. I left, I was just taking my voter registration, but I wanted to talk to city manager's office, because on that strip there where they put all their trash, they don't cut it. I asked the guys, "Why don't you cut this?" They said, "That's not our, our responsibility." But across the street, around the corner, they cut all of that. And I'm trying to figure out, let me give you a new definition.
Sir.
Definition. Okay, I'm just, let me just finish, I'm so, I know. I tried to call them up, and I get their phone number. They say, "We don't, this is not, it's not the correct phone number." We call that manipulation-trickulation. And I kept calling them and calling them. So I'm saying, we need some help with code enforcement.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna come and maybe-
Thank you, sir.
Talk to the city manager's office.
Thank you, sir.
So please, allow them.
Thank you.
You came to the right meeting, Mr. Debs, we just approved an ordinance.
I should've talked on the other one, too.
Uh, Liz Irons.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council. Well, as you know, I clean up trash, um, because it's a family event, and I've met some really great people here, and I know you all have joined in with us, too. And in fact, we met Mr. Debs. Lo and behold, he works for Dr. Pan. So, you know, he was so nice, he lent us borrow his shovel, because we really needed a shovel. But the point is, as an art commissioner, I approve or help review art pieces to enhance the city life. As an anti-trash woman, I do this because I love the city. Now, I don't know, I probably really aging myself, but, uh, Lady Bird Johnson, President Johnson's wife, okay, it was before 68, she had an initiative to beautify the United States. When I was a little girl, growing up in, uh, Santa Clara County, the freeways were nice-looking, now look at them. I see tents, I see a lot of dry grass. Maybe we can bring this beautification back, we have to have pride. I, I can tell you, just having, when you involve the community in something, they have a vested interest, they're gonna see it through, they're gonna love the community. When Meowak Park burned down several years ago, my family helped build it up. You know, we had a little niece and nephew come up from San Jose. We took them there, because why? My husband helped rebuild it. You know, that's something we can say to our children. What am I gonna say? If I ever have any grandchildren, I could say about the District 56 artwork. We spent so many hours on that. It looks great, let's have some pride. Smaller cities can do beautification, why can't we? You know, I, I'm getting to know a lot of the different peoples, different diversities, everything. And I'm really, really appreciating, but I think we need to do more. And I do appreciate the partnerships that we have with CSD, code enforcement, you all. Kevin Hoover was mentioned earlier. He's a godsend, delivering me bags all the time, and people picking up, um, the sharp containers from me. But I just wanna say, I don't think it'll cost that much money, because we're doing it anyways. Um, we'd like to see you out again, now that some of the elections have gone by. But we do have a good time, we enjoy each other. We had our partners, the goats, last, last Saturday, too, it was really cute. But just think about it. We, what, we wanna work? Whoops.
Thank you. Okay.
May I have a question for, for Ms. Irons? Don't mind.
Yeah.
Liz, just a quick question. First, I just wanna thank you and Brett and Sharon and all the, the anti-trash group for continuing your work. But in regards to, uh, this, this committee, and you heard, Ms. Tapia talk about, um, how staff can, can do more. Is, can, can staff support you in terms of, uh, you know, instead of a committee, can staff support you and still be organizing things and being able to bring people out, so you have that, uh, opportunity for interaction you're looking for?
Sharon and David take care of the most of the administration, but it's just, you know, who does this? Is this area CSD, or is this area city? That's the big thing, you know? And so, everybody's on the email chain. I think some of you are on the email chain. So, who gets what? And I, I think our biggest beef is that the landscapers that you all hire, well, they don't pick up the trash, they just run over it and make it microtrash. That's the biggest thing. I can tell you, if we had CSD people that worked here doing the landscaping, we'd see much improvement.
Okay.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Alright, that was the last of the public comments. So I'm gonna close the public comment opportunity and open it up for questions, comments. Um, I'll start from the right, Councilmember Winn.
I, I just saw something that came in from Ms. Sharon. And I'm not sure if we all received that email, and it says something that she, I think she sent it to you, Mr. Berman, and she wanted us to kinda read her, her thoughts. And I know she can't be here, and I don't know if Brett had spoken to her to see if there was something in specific that she wanted us to address tonight.
If you have a copy of the comments, um, certainly somebody can read that.
Earlier this evening, uh, I think a green sheet was circulated, so it would've been via email, but it was comments from Ms. Anderson and with the direction of the council. We can read that into the record if you wish.
Yes, please.
Uh, I have it pulled up before me, so, uh, I'll run the timer, make sure I don't go over time, so.
Oh, yep, three minutes.
Mayor and council members, this is from Sharon Anderson, of course. "Thank you very much for asking staff to research the public's proposal for establishing a beautification committee in the city of Elk Grove. Brett and I appreciate the work undertaken by staff and the rep, and the receptiveness of the council to consider the issues we raised. We agree that the city and the CSD continue to provide enhanced services for cleanup and trash removal, and we look forward to a more proactive approach to code enforcement, as stated by Ms. Tapia of your staff. Currently, as you know, the city and CSD relies on See Click Fix and/or emails to alert staff of issues around the city, especially on commercial properties that are poorly maintained. We truly hope that with additional staffing, private properties can get encouragement needed to improve their aesthetics and clean up their trash, maintain their landscaping, and add to the livability of Elk Grove. One property at the northeast corner of Bond and Elk Grove Florin is such a candidate. As we speak, there is trash accumulated everywhere, the trees and grass are starved and dying along Elk Grove Florin. These issues are not new, and we hope to see continuous follow-up of these types of properties. We sincerely also hope that the requests for the tree preservation and Tree City membership be put forward as I've personally witnessed the dwindling tree canopy in our residential neighborhoods on private property. We believe that trees must be preserved and encouraged wholeheartedly, especially during drought conditions, and we do not see the, then we do not see that occurring. Instead, trees are starved of water and left to die. Trees are considered a nuisance to many because of inconvenience, and many people simply do not appreciate or know how to care for the trees as they mature. We've also seen solar projects on public and commercial property go forward where trees are yanked out in lieu of solar panels. That's backwards, trees provide habitat along with shade and cooling for our pavement and buildings. There needs to be a way to keep the trees while also balancing the need for solar. Sacramento Tree Foundation has not helped our existing residential neighborhoods when it comes to identifying the tree canopy and preserving it. We certainly need a voice, and by taking steps to become a Tree City, perhaps we can get there. Thank you for listening, and let's keep that partnership strong, from Sharon Anderson."
Alright, you got that under two minutes.
Alright. So first, I wanna thank the anti-trash cleanup crew. Every Saturday, they are out there, and I had the opportunity to participate in a few Saturdays. Um, and I, I truly enjoy it, and I, I do see the difference. I do, I do, I've seen the difference since the group started. And the fact that you're out there, rain or shine, even during the, the hot weathers, uh, tells us that you really do care about, about the city and that more of us should care about our city, the city that, that we live in. And if we can do more to help you, I, I agree with Mr. Debs that we should do everything we can to assist this group here. And, um, I wanted to ask our city manager, do we have a program where our, our staff here can take time to volunteer or, or, okay? And is this an opportunity for them to also take part in? Because I know that we get a good group on Saturdays, but if we got a bigger group, we can hit more areas in such a short period of time, correct?
Yes, we do have a volunteer time-off program that we offer to staff. Uh, we also organize some city, um, opportunities for cleanup and tree planting and things like that. So definitely, um, love to explore more opportunities to partner with the anti-trash group.
Yes, yes. And then, is the ask, because I, I heard what Ms. Tapia said, it's that to not move forward with this beautification, if I heard correctly? To not move forward, but as far as the group, is the group wanting to still move forward with starting something? I, I, it was unclear, because I heard something different from our public comments and what Ms. Sharon Anderson is saying, and then I heard something different from what staff is recommending. So I just need some clarity.
So from my understanding, from Ms. Anderson's comments, Mr. Bartholomew, and what staff has suggested, um, is to enhance the communication and cleanup efforts and to look at Tree City USA, but not, uh, I didn't hear any advocacy, from them at least, the initial two, um, for forming a committee. Is that correct? Now, I did hear from some of the other, uh, from Mr. Debs and Ms. Irons, but from the- Now, I did hear from some of the other, from Mr. Debs and Ms. Irons, but from the two folks that brought this forward-
Right. That's my, is that what it is?
Yeah, and so those enhanced communication tools, I mean, you know, that was one of the items mentioned.
I heard that, but I, yeah, can you-
Yeah, if you want to come forward.
Yes, and just clarify.
We were sent an email from Rosa telling us what their staff recommendation was, so that's why we came with our comments today, because we were already informed that it was going to be not, what's the word? They were not, they were not approving or recommending it. So our, our response was, we're related to that, but we are for the committee, yes. I can speak for Sharon.
You are for?
Creation of a beautification and tree committee. Yes. Our comments were mainly in response to staff's recommendation against.
Okay.
The key is the Tree City require, there's four components of requirement for that, and one of them, there has to be a board, which is, most of these beautification committees in different cities are called a beautifications and tree committee. That's, it's just built into the title and the description and responsibilities.
So you're looking to move this further, start it as a committee, form a board, and also make that bigger than what it is now on Saturdays? You're wanting to move forward with that?
Yes. And to your question about if we're, if we could receive support, we currently are supported by the Republic. Anna spoke earlier. A lot of the bulk waste that she mentioned in her report, that's, you know, from us and the waste. They supply us with all of our bags, grabbers, gloves, buckets, so we're as supportive as we can be, and we appreciate that city does have cleanup events. We're the main people who show up to there. We, you know, there's definitely a large group, you know, different rotaries have tree planting events. You know, we partner with as many nonprofits as we, as that there are. We are aware of them on social media, and the key is that the Tree City is something that the city has already, I don't have the exact date, but in 2007, it was declared that that's something that they want, we want to do, and there's been limited progress in that department.
So Brett, you acknowledge that you're already being supported by the city. You're already doing the work, all of you, great work, and the only reason why you need to do, form a committee is to meet the requirement of the Tree City?
That's one major component of it, yes.
What would be the other one?
I think it's to enhance the capacity of the citizens to inform us what they would like, to give us some more, you know, empowerment to request information from people, to then report to staff or to you what would be, what they would like, you know, including the murals that we're doing. That's a, you know, it's an art commission, but it's also beautification, graffiti, you know, trash is, it all adds up, the trees. It's a, it's a general, it's not just trash. It's, you know, I think the mural is something, yeah, the increased ability for us to receive and disseminate people's desires.
I, I'm sorry, Mary, just one more clarification. I, because I heard Ms. Tapia say that in their staff report, that they believe staff can provide that support. So I'm seeking your input as to what you think staff can't provide, can't support you in, that a committee would need to be formed.
I guess I'm-
So what enhanced communications and relationships help achieve the goals without creating a committee? Because as staff presented a number of points, the work is being done that was desired through various different departments.
That's what's been declared, that, you know, the increased funding, and that there are now going to be more routine cleanups. That's all very encouraging to hear.
Right.
Obviously, the proof's in the pudding when it actually happens, and $500,000 is quite a lot of money. I'm really interested in how that's spent. You know, it doesn't cost us anything but manpower, and, you know, $20, $30 a person in supplies, which lasts us for a month or so, so that's a, that's quite a, quite a big investment, which is much appreciated.
Did you have, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Spies?
So I think, all right, so when it comes to the commission or committee, or whatever we're going to call it, that seems to be integral to the Tree City. If you don't, if you're not going to be a Tree City, then you don't need the committee. So what I'm suggesting is, even though in 2007, there, I mean, I'll take it that there was a-
What do you have information on that?
Well, but I think-
I can speak to that real quickly, to the Tree City. So the Tree City is by delegating tree care decisions to a professional forester, arborist, city department, citizen-led tree board, or some combination of both. So it doesn't have to be a committee. It can be a combination. It can be just a department. So right now, between CSD and the city, we take on the responsibility of the tree maintenance for all public trees. That's what this Tree City designation is for, is for public trees within the right-of-way and city-owned property.
Right.
And there's this four requirements, a tree ordinance, you have to spend $2 per capita, and you have to do a proclamation, which the city previously did, and it doesn't look like it's been done in the last couple of years. I don't hold me to that, but that's the fourth component.
Right, so that's where I'm going with it. I think what the next step needs to be, before we do any committee or any of that conversation, which, I mean, there's, there's value. I see value, obviously. But what I'm saying is that we need to bring the Tree City conversation back again, right? Because it's been 2007, we don't know where that is. Let's bring Tree City, I mean, if, you know, if everybody concurs, bring that back. Let's figure out if we're going to continue that. And then from that, obviously, some sort of committee would, or commission or something would need to be formed. But to do it tonight is cart before horse, I think, right? So other, other things, though, I'm really absolutely thrilled to see the $500,000 added to the budget. And the reason I say that is, I mean, these volunteers are out there every weekend, and it's just my humble opinion that this, you know, cleaning up litter is everybody's responsibility, absolutely, but I see that as a city function, to make sure that litter is off the streets. And so I'm really glad to see that we're putting budget towards that. That's very much appreciated. See Click Fix is new, obviously, and it works well. I try to, you know, proselytize that everywhere I go and tell people about its benefits. One thing that, I guess, from this, can we do some sort of public awareness campaign relative to See Click Fix, and not just that, but let's be proud of our city.
Yeah.
Let's be proud of, you know, this, and if you see litter on the ground, pick it up, right? I think everybody knows where a lot of the mass of trash is coming from, relative to an item we had tonight.
What is, what is that item?
What is that item? I don't know.
And is there a fee with that?
Is there a $100 item?
Is there a fine? Is there a fine if you litter? So, so that's, let's see, so the public awareness, I would like to see, in terms of, there's a ton of litter along the freeways, and again, I know where the origin of that likely is, but it's also coming from vehicles that go by. Regardless of where it's coming from, we got to work on that. And I think what I'd, what I'd like to see is, I mean, my bet is, we could probably go to, well, as a councilperson or council, we could probably go to some of the larger sponsors and say, "Hey, would you be willing to have your name up on the road on the highway? Can you help us with getting those freeways cleaned?" So if I could ask to have some costs, you know, what that cost is, I'm not suggesting the city pays for it, but we can always get the AMPM or someone-
We're currently investigating the Adopt a Highway program, pursuant to your request.
That's great.
We'll be bringing back some cost information to you directly through the city manager, likely.
That, that's great, because I mean, if we can pay for that to be done, and we can get, you know, responsible, with gas stations or coffee, you know, coffee companies to pay for that, that would be awesome. Let's see. But I, so for me, the big thing is, I guess, the Tree City, if everybody else is interested, I'd like to see that come back, and then at that point in time, we decide whether to-
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see more information on that. And to your point on the public, public affairs sort of campaign, you know, keep Elk Grove beautiful, beautify Elk Grove, having that sort of mindset, there's many things you can do with that. I've seen it in other cities where there's poster contests and their showcase, but if it becomes part of the culture, the pride, something that you see like you see in other cities that somebody mentioned. I mean, I would certainly be interested in looking at that. But in terms of forming an actual committee, I think I support what staff is suggesting, and that, you know, and that is, a lot of this work is being addressed in other areas. What I am interested in is what Councilmember Spies mentioned. I would like to see more, get more information on this Tree City USA. But I, I think it's amazing that our community wants to step up continuously. Ms. Anderson, Mr. Bartholomew, and others, and Ms. Irons, you might be behind the screen here, I can't see from where I'm sitting, but that you're willing to serve yet on something else, that's quite remarkable, and I applaud all of you for your continued investment in our city. But I think that, you know, we still have some more information gathering to do, and seeing what options might be available, just short of creating an actual beautification committee. I would be interested in still getting more information and see how best we can enhance pre-existing efforts and making that more robust. Councilmember Hume, Vice Mayor, anything else?
I agree with those sentiments.
Yeah, I also agree. I mean, that, the, we heard from the staff report and Ms. Tapia, and that's why I was posing the question to Mr. Bartholomew, because I wanted to make sure I understood what the intent behind the committee is. And but, so at this time, I'm more comfortable with moving forward with staff's recommendation, and of course, bringing back information about Tree City.
All right. Thank you. We are going on to our next item, item 10. Council comments, reports, future agenda items. We'll start to the left. Councilmember Hume.
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Sin.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Spies.
Keep it going, keep it going. I have nothing to report, so go ahead.
Okay.
Well, I was going to say one good thing, relative to a tax measure last night, that was probably, most likely not noticed by many, but appears to have been supported, which is good.
Yes.
Which is SAVSA, which is a dollar that comes out of your registration every year, which allows us to be able to pick up vehicles that are abandoned on the streets. So while I'm, you know, not a huge tax fan, not a huge tax fan, that is one of those taxes that works for us, and I'm really glad that that was approved by the voters last night.
Yes, and as a committee member for STA, that is an extra bonus. So speaking of STA, I would like to report that one of our very own, Kevin Bucy, who used to work for the city, is now the new executive director for STA.
Wow.
We appointed him last week, and he was above and beyond the best candidate that not only that applied, but he can definitely hit the ground running. He wowed the entire subcommittee that was tasked with doing the recruitment and screening process. There was only one candidate that stood out, and so we only forwarded one for consideration out of all of the applicants, so something for us to be proud of. And he's, he's quite phenomenal. And then I just, last week, was at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. Other than that, and, U.S. Conference of Mayors and climate mayors, so there was two conferences happening at the same time. So thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. We will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It is 9:28. Have a blessed evening. Blessed.